I want to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street here in Granbury, Texas. We're very pleased to have with us today the Pastor Lowell Orkinbach. I got that right, don't I? Pretty close. He's a good man here. He's gonna give us the invocation this morning, and he does a good job.
Commissioners, thank you for having me today. Would you please bow your heads? Father, I just thank you that we still live in a country where we are free to worship you, we are free to praise you, Lord. Lord, I ask you to continue to bring wisdom and understanding to those leaders in our country, Lord, that we can start now with a spirit of unity, Lord, and a spirit of true humbleness through our leadership that will slowly, at this point, start to work its way up even through Washington, Lord. But we must have that here, right here in Hood County as a benchmark for that, Lord. So we ask for wisdom, Lord, we ask for unity, and we ask for humbleness over our leaders, and we thank you for that in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
And now the pledge from the great state of Texas. Honorable Texas flag. Our pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
There are no special presentation, no service awards today, Ms. Welborn, okay? So the next item on the agenda is the open mic of the citizens' comments at large, and the first speaker is Brad Yarborough.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I'd like to say thank you for letting me put out the St. Jude signs around the courthouse. It really turned out really, really well. Nationwide, we raised $255,000 for St. Jude, so, and it was a big help with you guys. Donations are still coming in, so feel free to scan the barcode, and I would love to meet my personal goal here in Granbury at $1,200. I think we're at $850, $900, somewhere around there, so, again, please feel free to donate. So switching gears, we have a political group out there that always says to keep our elected officials accountable, and I think that's, I agree with that, we need to. And I've come up here and talked several times about our county clerk not doing her job, and if you look now on the county website, the minutes are three months behind. She's due for August, September, and October. It's a simple task to put the minutes out there, and that hasn't been done, so that's kind of alarming. And then Dave is wanting to add to her workload and try to get her to do the agenda for this Commissioner's Court, but if you can't do the minutes, what makes you think you can do the agenda? And again, the AG said that it's not in her wheelhouse of stuff to do, so, again, we're three months behind on this, I would like to see it get caught up. I'd also like to know what else we dropped the ball on. If you can't do simple things like the minutes, what else has fallen through the cracks in that office? So I definitely will be taking a look at that. Judge, Commissioners, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the second speaker is Jay Riley.
I appreciate the opportunity to have you all on the same spot. I'm here today to officially give my notice of intent to retire on January the 2nd, 2024. I've enjoyed the last five years that I've been employed with the county. I'd also like to give y'all my appreciation of working with me on the projects that we've done. I think y'all have made good decisions, and we've done well, and I think things went smooth. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to all of the elected officials of this county, as well as the department heads, the appointed officials. Everybody here has been very great to work with. I haven't had any issues, we've always got along, we may not have always agreed with everything due to constrictions of getting parts and things like that. Y'all may have got a little hot a time or two in your space, and I apologize for that. You may got a little cold, and I apologize for that. I'd also like to, the appreciation I have for all the employees of the county, they've worked well with us because we worked with all of them. I also appreciate my staff, they're the ones that made it what it is today. I think they've done a good job, I think they've been, everybody's been good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We've tried to spend it well, not frivolously. Also, I'd like to thank my custodial staff, and I'd like to extend something to everybody else on that, and I know y'all are pretty good about it. Y'all say thank you to them because they work behind the scenes, they keep everything clean, they keep the trash picked up, they do a lot of stuff. Sometimes we forget about them. I appreciate, or appreciate everything they've done for me since I've been head of the department. I feel we have a good crew, I feel that they've done well, we've done many improvements. My time here has been very satisfying. I hate to leave, but I want to retire more. So, anyway, Hood County's my home, and it always will be, I live here, and I hope to see you all around. Thank you.
Good. Well, I'd like to add, well, I'd like to add one thing. There are so many groups here that have things put on that Jay Riley and his staff have always helped them, and they are the only department that I know that get cakes and cookies and all kinds of treats. They'll take them to lunch, they'll do a lot of stuff, but they do that. I know that Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, for one, told me that Jay Riley cannot retire and that I cannot accept his resignation. So there's a lot of people that feel that way, I know I do, so, this is a great guy here, we're gonna miss him, we're all gonna miss him, he's gonna be very hard to replace. You've done a great job, you're a great person, and we're gonna be calling on you, so I'm glad you're gonna be just down there in Toler, so we know where to get you. All right? Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right?
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Jay. Thank you. Next speaker is Tina Brown.
I'm here to ask you, or to remind you that we, in the audience here, would appreciate it if you would discuss the agenda item before you call up speakers. The only legal time the five of you can discuss anything on the agenda is at this time in court, so we don't know, we don't always know what the agenda item is about, so if y'all would explain it a little bit, maybe some of us won't talk because you'll answer our questions, or maybe it will give us more questions to ask. So if you could just please do that, that would help. If anything is removed from the agenda, I hope there will be an explanation and discussion. I'm happy to see that we still have open comments every meeting, as the school board just squashed that last night and made it quarterly, so I hope that that stays. And in the interest of saving the county a tiny bit of money and that unifies a few trees, is it really necessary for the public participation form to be a full page? Do you really need my address? Do you really need my employment, or what organization I might belong to? I think this could, if these things are not required or needed, it could possibly be squashed down and put two on a page to save a little bit of trees and county supplies. Also, I would ask for your help. I have called the State Highway Department twice in the last couple of months, and I keep getting told that they will pick up the trash, and they are not doing that. Maybe if you would call them, maybe they will actually get their people out there to pick up the trash. We have been told by state troopers that we are not allowed in the ditch area with our four-wheeler to pick up trash, so, you know, I've called twice. I was told it was gonna be done in September. I called again last week, week before, and she said she didn't know anything about it, didn't know when the contractors would be out there. I'm just wondering if the contractors got paid and they just never came, because nobody's checking on that. So maybe a little phone call to you, to the State Highway Department, to tell them, my, I live on 51 South, it's a garbage dump all the way to the plant, it's ridiculous. It's been like that since they mowed after the flowers, so maybe if y'all could make a little phone call for me, maybe it'll help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Mike Davis.
So a couple of weeks ago, you referenced me going in, talking to Nanette in her office, and talking to her about enacting Robert's Rules of Orders, and you said that I almost attacked her and threatened. Can you explain that to me? How do you almost attack somebody? And if I did attack her and threaten her, and she went to the sheriff's department and made a complaint, and there was actually, like, something to move forward, don't you think that I would got in charge or something? Nothing happened, it got thrown out immediately. Once again, fabricating things, trying to push an agenda that ain't there. You guys had a hell of a week, didn't you? You got a, got a accused pedophile, you know, somebody you properly vetted, huh? Do you know that whenever you held your little meet and greet with John Shirley at La Fiesta, Arturo was the number one suspect in the Holly Palmer death? Way to vet him, huh? You go to his restaurant and lie yourself with a murder suspect? You guys are doing a bang-up job. You got two arrests in two days, properly vetted people, and the one guy you choose not to endorse, he's the one now running against Skip. Appreciate it.
Okay, our next speaker is Dr. Granik.
Pass.
Pass, okay. So that's all of the, did anybody register for open mic that I didn't call? Okay, so now we're going into the-
Ron.
Oh, Mr. Sutton, I got you voting on the agenda for number two.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so that's one thing that we're gonna get to. And that's what I wanted to remind everybody, is that we're now going into the miscellaneous business to be discussed, and if you want to speak about any item on the agenda, you must fill out a public participation form, and I do have some forms on each agenda item. So when I call the agenda item, then I will call the speakers that have signed up for that agenda item, okay? So the first item on the miscellaneous is to discuss and take appropriate action to approve the Hood County facilities policies and procedures and the facilities requirements and agreement. This policy and agreement will be used by non-county organizations to reserve space inside county-owned facilities or outside areas. So I guess, kind of taking up for, or-
Yeah, I can-
-heeding the suggestion here that Tina Davis has said on the thing, I'll go ahead and call upon Commissioner Samuelson to go ahead and comment, since she's the one that sponsored item number one.
That's Tina Brown. So-
I got, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms.
Brown. So, yes, during recent request to use the county facilities, buildings, and ground, it became apparent that the county did not have a procedure to request the use of the space to ensure the county was protected from liability and that the sheriff's department knew what was happening and that they would have staff there, and that the people reserving knew that there was a charge to have security, things like that. So Mr. Mills and Ms. Welborn worked together to put this procedure, to develop a procedure, and everyone has that now, hopefully you've had time to review it. I just want to extend my thanks to Matt Mills and Alan Quine, his assistant attorney, and Ms. Welborn for the work that they did to hopefully cover all the bases. The library has already had a policy, so it will not be part of this new policy, but other open spaces and building meeting rooms would be, so, I guess, Owen, if you're over there, if you would put the policy up so people could see it, that would be great. Anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns, or do we need Matt or Melissa to explain?
This is specifically for non-county organizations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's, that's important for everybody to notice. I think everything else, we always bring it up for use of any facilities, we do have a procedure, but this is for outside organizations.
Yes.
Non-county organizations. Anybody, Ms. Brown, excuse me.
She said her alias.
Brown, Davis, White, okay. See, if you had a name like Massingill, I wouldn't forget that.
You're stalking me or something here. So, well, my first question was answered, we never had a policy, so-
Correct.
Did someone bring this to you, or did you just, was there a problem?
Yes, during, I don't know, several meetings back, it came to the attention that we were not covered for liability, so we talked about implementing some type of request for people who wanted to use, for example, the historical courthouse during off-hours when there's not security or people there already covering for liability, but that would have cost the organization, whoever it was, considerable amount of money to go and get a liability policy. So Matt Mills and Melissa had a great idea, which was to just include a "hold harmless" wording on our application. Well, we don't have an application, so that became known at that point, that we didn't have an application to add the "hold harmless" information to. So trying to incorporate, and we also didn't have a way to let people know how to get access, pick up keys, contact the sheriff's department, whatever it was they needed to do, so it just, we needed to have a procedure.
Okay, so, so are we just talking about the courthouse? Because I've read the thing, it sounded like there were lots of places.
Yes.
And so, as a citizen, I don't know those places, so is that gonna be posted? What is available for non-county, I mean, is it gonna be posted somewhere, the things that can be rented?
Well, it's not renting, it's just to reserve it.
Oh, well, to reserve it, but, I mean-
For example, there's the annex, meeting room in the annex, there's, someone actually, I think years ago, used this room to do interviews, correct?
Okay, but that's what I'm talking about.
Historic courthouse, you got the gazebo, you got places inside, outside.
Yeah.
Any place that's a government-owned facility?
Okay.
And if you're a non-county, but this is non-county, if you live here in a county, it's a little bit different, we all know you, okay?
Well, no, it's non-county organizations, so any organization that is not, like-
Like, if you're from Dallas or Houston-
No, that's not what this means.
Not what I understood.
This isn't an organization that's not associated with Hood County government, so-
Right, that's what I understood.
That's what it is.
So, but as far, as far, so if I wanted to, to reserve, I mean, is there a place, is there a, is it on the website somewhere?
Not at this point, but-
A list of things that can be reserved?
You can-
I mean, I-
I think probably the answer is it's all county buildings, and if you find a need or something, then you can come and ask permission specifically for that. I think some places, you know-
Yeah, but only people-
Obviously, a courtroom would be, you know-
Yeah, but what I'm trying to say is, the citizens do not know this is a possibility unless they come to this court and, today, and actually hear this, because I didn't know, I've been coming in this court for two years, I didn't know I could reserve space, you know, I'm just saying, is there a way to let the citizens know this?
Or just contact Melissa, she can help you.
Our reporters go put it in the hood cabinet.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, and thank you, and thank you, Katie, for getting those minutes on the, on the website.
Okay, that's all the comments that I have, all the people I have on this, so-
So did that-
Want to make a motion?
Well, did that clarify your question? It's, it's not anyone outside of the county, it's, it's any organization that's not affiliated with the county government, okay? All right. Yes, I will, any other commissioner have any comments, questions, concern? All right, well, again, thank you, Matt, Melissa, and Alan, for doing a diligent job to cover all the bases, and with that, I'll make the motion to approve the new facilities policy and agreement.
Second. A motion, and bade by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the Hood County facilities policies and procedures and the facilities requirements and agreement, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. The second item under miscellaneous is consider and take appropriate action to vote for members of the Board of Directors of the Hood Central Appraisal District for a two-year term to begin January the 1st, 2024. Of course, we have, as a taxing entity, being Hood County, we're the second-largest entity that has vote, votes that we can cast for Board of Directors. The school district has 3,177 votes that they have to allocate among the Board of Directors, and Hood County has 1,187. The next largest is the city of Granbury with 319, and I don't, it's gonna take, I think the Hood County by themselves maybe have enough if we all voted for one Board of Directors member to get one member of our choosing on the Board of Directors. But the other entities, which are other school districts in the cities of Lapan, Toler, Bluffdale, Glen Rose ISD, Godley ISD, Lapan ISD, and Toler ISD, have got to combine their votes with other entities in order to get a board member elected. So with that, we had two applicants that applied to be members of the Board of Director from Hood County, representing Hood County, and that was Greg Harold and Rod Litke. They're the only two that made an application, and both of these gentlemen here are in the audience here today. Mr. Harold, would you please stand up and identify yourself? That's Greg Harold right there, and then next is Mr. Rod Litke, who is right here, stand up. So these are the two gentlemen that have applied to, want to, put their time and effort to this real, it's a real good job where everybody likes and thanks the Board of Directors for all the good job they do, and they give them cookies and all kinds of stuff, and it's a real nice job, and they get paid absolutely nothing to do this job, but it's a very important job. And the commissioners got the applications from both of these individuals, and we have the application here, and the commissioners have all read the qualifications of both of these gentlemen, and I think at that time, we have one speaker that has signed up to speak from the citizens, and that's Mr. Ron Sutton, but I'd like to call upon any other commissioner if they wish to say anything at this time regarding the upcoming vote that we're gonna take for either Mr. Harold or Mr. Litke.
Yeah, yeah, Judge, I got something. Did you jump in there, Kevin?
Go ahead, you're good. I'll-
So last night, the GISD put in their votes, and we haven't been, they haven't shared that with us yet. As you may or may not know, the mayor of Granbury and myself, we've been very engaged in HCAD the last several months about several issues. We've attended many of their meetings in the transition where they had an interim director, and they finally ended up hiring a chief appraiser from another area recently, and there are many issues that go along with the HCAD. It's a very important job, and it is a very thankless job. I agree with that. However, I didn't, I'm gonna read to you a portion of the letter that was sent to us the end of October by the central HCAD, the new chief appraiser, Mr. Jeff Law. It says, "The taxing units are not required to vote, so we could just not do anything if they choose, but they must determine the votes in a public meeting by resolution adopted by the governing body, and they must submit that to the HCAD by December 15th." I wanted to, I didn't realize this was gonna be on the agenda until this weekend, when I started trying to get up to speed on today. I think it's premature, because I would like, I would like to actually, I reached out to Mr. Litke yesterday, and we played some phone tag, and he was gracious enough to come up here. I think we've got two excellent candidates, to be honest with you, but I would like to have a chance to, this is a very, very important position, in my opinion. I'm not taking this lightly, and we've got an entire month before we have to vote on this, and we haven't seen what the city of Granbury's gonna do with their 317 votes either. It may not make any difference in the price of tea in China, but I would like to make a motion right now to table this till the next meeting or the first meeting in December to give at least this commissioner a chance to meet for coffee with Mr. Litke and get to know him a little bit. So I'm making a motion to table this.
I'll second that with this comment. I think that, I'll agree with you, Dave, that we absolutely have two excellent choices here, and I want to see both of them on there, and I think that if we step back from this vote right now, we can come in more strategically at a date in the future and make sure that we do everything we can to get both of these candidates on that board, if at all possible. So, yeah, I'll second that.
I agree, I think that we have excellent, two excellent candidates, plus we have, you know, people who have served, like Mr. Sutton, who have already shown, and Mr. Frye, who have shown outstanding qualifications. I'd like to see, I mean, Mr. Sutton was the, was the only one on the board who stepped forward and made recommendations to reduce the budget of HCAD when we were there at the meeting, probably July, June, I can't remember when it was, but he was the only one that stepped forward and said that this, that- But he was the only one that stepped forward and said that this, that we should take a look at this budget and perhaps reduce it. Also, I think that, and I don't know where the votes are going, but I think if we haven't learned anything from what's happened this past six, seven months, we should realize that putting a city, city council member on a board of appraisal is an obvious conflict of interest. I would hope that a person who is in a position of setting a tax rate would remove themselves from consideration, knowing that it's an obvious conflict of interest. We saw that firsthand when we had the same person speaking in the same meeting as a city council member and then put on another hat and spoke as a Hood County appraisal district member. That, that is, if we haven't learned anything, we should learn that that is not the right thing to do. So I'm in favor of, especially when we have such outstanding citizens who are ready to serve and have served well. So I, I don't need to third it, but, but I agree with you guys.
Now, Mr. Sutton, you're the only citizen who signed up to speak. You're not gonna be out if we pass this. You want to reserve your comments until we have the actual, before we're gonna vote? Would you like to say something now? Because you did sign up to say something.
Judge, I would never want to pass the opportunity to say something about a good man.
Well. Well, would you like to go ahead and say a few?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please.
Good morning, Commissioners Court. County Judge, it's about two years ago that this same body voted me into office to serve on the Hood County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And everything that y'all said about that job, that position, is true. I tell you, it's a, a humbling honor to serve the taxpayers and the tax entities of Hood County on that Board of Directors. I would like to thank y'all for giving me that experience. And I've come to ask you to support a man that is much more qualified than myself to serve on that Board of Directors. We have the opportunity to raise the bar of the caliber of people that serve on that Board of Directors. And each of y'all know that we need to continually strive to do that in Hood County in every aspect of Hood County business for the benefit of the citizens of Hood County. When I arrived on the board, which was January of 2022, there were some known challenges that faced the board, like low morale and lacking leadership, which contributed to poor customer service and internal bickering. We faced some unknown challenges, practices put in place by the previous Board of Directors that did not follow standards, standard operating procedures as set forth by the State Controller's Office for appraisal districts. Lack of communication from the Board of Directors slash Chief Appraiser to the taxing entities created these challenges. I'm thankful to report that the 2022, 2023 Board of Directors have made significant progress overcoming both the known and unknown challenges. We're making progress. This progress has been in partnership with all Hood County taxing entities. And Judge Massengill just read who all of those taxing entities are. The Board of Directors did not accomplish what we have accomplished by ourselves. We had the support and cooperation of all the taxing entities. And moreover, we had the full support of the staff of Hood County Central Appraisal District. Now, that being said, there's still much more to do. We need to make and, and make some improvements to make and sustain, to ensure Hood County operates at the highest level of efficiency, professionalism, and integrity. And that's why I'm here to talk about Mr. Rod Litke. He has all of those qualifications that he can bring. Each member of the Commissioners Court has received his bio. I hope that you had a chance to see it and review it. But Rod, to be a member of the board, you have to have lived in Hood County for two years. Now, Rod and DeeDee have lived in this county for 30 years. He's a rancher and a farmer. And when I first became a member of the board, I thought what we're missing is a representative on this Board of Directors that represents the agricultural industry in Hood County that cannot be overlooked. Rod is the perfect choice to do that. Rod not only owns farm and ranch land, he also owns rental properties. So he's very familiar with tax rates and what property values really are and what they should be. He's got great experience there. He is the owner-operator of Jericho Energy Incorporated. And he is a registered, he's registered with the state as a P5 producer based in Hood County. And he owns and operates gas wells in Hood County. Now, we pay a third party, the Central Appraisal District pays a third party to come in and do those appraisals, mineral appraisals, oil and gas rights, all of that. It'd be great to have a member on the Board of Directors that understands that process and where those values come from. He is CEO of Customer Service Week. It is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) educational entity. And customer service is very important when you come to the Board of Directors.
Mr. Sutton, we have a five-minute limit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll give you 10 seconds here to kind of wrap up.
Okay, I appreciate it, Judge. Appreciate that 10. Needless to say, Rod Litke is the right man for the right job at the right time. I appreciate your courtesy and for listening. And I'll come back in December, Judge.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you very much. Okay. So we got a motion to table made by Commissioner Eagle, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion is tabled until December. Okay. This brings us to item number three. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding three bids for the demolition and removal of the slab foundations of Silent Prey and Black Star and preparation for re-sod, the re-sod to be done by the Hood County Facility Maintenance. That's still gonna happen, isn't it, Jay, even though you're not gonna be here? Come on up here and tell us about the bids and what we got on that.
Yes, the re-sod, and we'll do that. That's no problem to get. It's not a very big area. So I didn't feel like that was something we should put on the contractor, nor should we pay for it. We, we'll just buy the grass and put it in. And, you know, it, the time of year that we're doing it, we'll probably have to really get it cleaned up in the spring, just so you know. You know, we'll put the grass down, but it's not really gonna take till spring.
Okay. All right. And then we also have the three bids. And I think we got the low bid on here was the actual person that actually performed the foundation and has done a lot of other work here in Hood County, also for the Veterans Memorial and does of others, a lot of other work.
That's correct. I was glad to see that that one come in where it did for the simple fact that he knows what's there. We won't have to worry about hitting anything. We know where everything's at. So it's, and he's got the equipment to do it.
And that is diversified elite, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And that is the low bid. Is that, that's for $5,500, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you.
Have any other discussion or questions to ask?
Do you receive their insurance certificate?
I have not received it. He has, I have called him. He does have it. We will have it in hand before we do any work.
Okay. What's the required level, Glenn? So we, we could make the motion to make it contingent on receiving the, the required insurance liability amount and certificate. I think that'd be, I mean.
Yeah, we normally do that. What we'll do is make sure they've got it before they work. And normally, they're not gonna tell me they got it, and they don't. They want the work, but they'll normally get us the paperwork before we ever start. So we've been pretty diligent about that.
Any other thing?
Well, we talked about this via email. So the historical district, or the historical commission is asking for pictures before, during, and after. So your staff or their staff will be responsible for.
Yeah, they can do that. Also, the guy that usually does the work, he's real good about taking pictures of what he does. So we'll have lots of pictures to send forward. We can send them out of our office to James, if that's what's needed, copying y'all on it, of course. So y'all have got a record of it.
That's right.
And.
You know, this is, we have a reprieve to do it before, by January 15th.
That's, was my understanding, yes.
Right. And we'll have pictures made. And we work with these people at the State Historical Commission. So we will have that done. So I'll make a motion that we accept the diversified elite construction proposal in the amount of $5,500 to remove Silent Prey and Black Star Foundation down to beams and haul away and grade the area. That includes material and labor with Hood County to replace the sod.
That's correct.
I hear second.
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Wilson.
Well.
Any further discussion?
Yes, it needs to be contingent on receiving the, the insurance.
Contingent on the liability?
Mm-hmm. Contingent on receiving the insurance certificate and proper levels of liability.
This guy has done so many projects, that's part of it. He knows the routine, like I said. He does that with proper insurance, which he does have.
I might say y'all have a copy of it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Tell him that he's got it. Thank you. Motion carries five zero. All right. Item number four, discuss and consider revisions to the Hood County longevity policy. Ms. Welber.
Yes, good morning. I went over our current longevity policy and updated it to accommodate, I believe, what was discussed during the budget process. And I believe this is it, unless somebody sees something.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Do you want to say something in particular about it, since you sponsored it, Ms. Commissioner Andrews?
It's, you know, looking, looking at the old longevity pay that we had there, it really needed to be reconfigured. And we kind of worked it in with compensation to kind of equal everything out there. I think it's a good plan, the way that we've got that done, and.
It's a very, it's very generous. Thank you.
Thank you. You've done a great job on this. I think it's very easy. So everybody, all the commissioners have it. So longevity pay will be awarded $100 per year of continuous full-time service Hood County, starting at year three. That's the basic part of it. Kind of thing. So that's very important to keep. We want to keep all our employees here as long as we possibly can.
That is true.
Because they all do a good job.
Yes.
And I think our Hood County employees are the best. And we want to keep every one of them.
I agree.
So that's, that's really good. Any other comment? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the revision to the Hood County longevity policy.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the revision of the Hood County longevity policy, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you, Ms. Welber.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five, discuss and consider road and bridge promotion from EO1-1, $45,760, to EO Roman numeral 2-1, $52,000. We got Mr. Donald Lenny here, who does a real good. Speaking of good employees, that was a person, a great segue to talk about Donald Lenny, who does a great job here for road and bridge here in Hood County. What do you got here, Mr. Lenny?
Judge Massengill, Commissioners. This individual's been with the department for three years. I spoke with each, each of you about his situation. We do have an opening that come up with our EO2, which is basically our Class A CDL drivers with the, with trailer trucks. This individual, when he come three years ago, we didn't have that, an opening for an EO2. And in that time, he's done some training with the trailers that we have, and he's very capable of operating what we have now. And I do recommend and ask that you, that we promote this individual to, from EO1, Step 1, to EO2, Step 1.
Yeah. And basically, this is, this is somebody that has the credentials for an EO2. An EO2 is a Class A CDL. So this i- is a position that you have to have. He's changing positions to do this. This isn't just a middle-of-the-year promotion. He's actually doing a different job.
Yes.
So just wanted to clarify on that. So with that, I'll make a motion to allow road and bridge promotion from EO1-1 to EO2-1 at $52,000 a year.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to do the bridge and road permission, the EO1-1 to an EO2-1, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
Yes, Judge. I just want to thank you, Mr. Lenny, for taking the time to come to our offices and laying out what you needed to have done. I really appreciate what you do. And I really want to thank you here in open public for having the courtesy to come to our offices and discuss in person, eyeball to eyeball, what you wanted to do and lay it out for us so that we understood. So when we came in here, we could vote on it. I do not like getting surprised in Commissioners Court. And you don't ever put us in a position where I have to get a surprise. So thank you very much.
I second that. Thank you.
Let me, let me tell the citizens, I keep getting the cops here. Commissioner Eagle has pulled items number 13 and 15 from the agenda. So y'all can quit. Those items are pulled. So anybody that has signed up to speak and are continuing signing up to speak, please quit there or no longer. I should have announced it earlier, but those two items are pulled from the agenda. So, I guess. So any other, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion again carries five zero. Okay. Item number six, discuss county capital improvement program, including projects, timing, and funding. Commissioner Samuelson sponsored this.
Yes. If we could, Jim Sabonis is running late in traffic, and he was actually gonna lead this discussion. So five and six, so if you wouldn't mind skipping over these until he arrives. Jim Sabonis from Hilltop Capital, he was going, he's, he's running late. Oh, sorry, six and seven. Yeah. He was gonna lead six and seven and, and.
You want to just hold off on six and seven?
Yes. His, right as court was starting, I got a message that he would probably be here by 9:45, but I don't see him. So if we could?
Skip then to items, item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the charter contract to convert analog phone lines to digital. Owen.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So this agreement is basically just to move us off of our old copper-based infrastructure for our phones and move us into the future onto a fiber optic backbone for it instead. Ultimately, this, we do have, I believe it's about $5,000-ish in one-time fees. However, this will bring down our monthly bill by about $700 almost across all of our phones because the old copper, a lot harder to maintain. So it ends up being more expensive.
So without question, IT is recommending we do this.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any Commissioner or anybody else have any comment or question? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we allow the county judge to sign the charter contract to convert analog phone lines to digital, as stated.
I hear a second.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the county judge to sign the charter contract to convert analog phone lines to digital. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Owen. Item number nine, consider and take appropriate action to approve the county judge to sign a contract and enter into an agreement with Flock Safety Cameras to purchase two Safety Falcon cameras from Fund 55. Authorize the amount to spend up to $16,000. The recurring cost per year per camera is $3,000. Commissioner Wilson, you sponsored it?
Yes, sir. This will install two Flock safety cameras to help dispatch and locate additional, you know, possible problem areas or, you know, things coming in or out of the county. The city of Granberry currently has eight cameras already in existence. With the addition of these two, they'll be strategically located, and they will allow, you know, a lot more sight, you know, dis, you know, control over the, some of the traffic areas that we're experiencing. The Flock group is a sole source vendor, and there is also a sole source letter that has to be signed by the court to authorize the sole, you know, that. The, you know, they've worked very diligently with the dispatch supervisor and Sheriff's Department, working towards getting, you know, this area set up for these cameras. Sheriff Deed.
So Judge and Commissioners, this is a great thing when they came out with these cameras. And we'll get, I get emails every day from more and more people that are putting them in across the country. And these things are helping law enforcement all over. When they put out a, like in the past, they put out an Amber Alert, and we'd get the teletype about it. But then you had to really take time to look for it. And sometimes you really didn't have the time because you're busy doing other things. Well, if they come by any of those cameras, that, you know, vehicle matching that description or license plate, then it's going to let us know if they're in our area. So then we can focus harder on going after that person, whether it's a missing child, a missing elderly person, people with warrants that, murder warrants that have taken off and they can't find them, just so many different things. And there was some news just the other day that they caught, caught another person out of the county somewhere with those Flock cameras. So they've, they've just been, are so valuable to us. And this is just for two of them, one up by Crescent, one down 144 South. So we can see people coming in and out of the county. And then that'll keep us in line for being able to have access to all this information. We got granted some access through, special access through the city to get, get stuff. And they're calling us all the time. It helps immensely. When we're trying to find somebody, we can catch them on the cameras. It'll, it'll let us know when that person that's been, we're looking for, for whatever reason. So it's, it's, it's like having extra officers out there on the street. So this came to my attention, and we jumped on it to get that privilege to be able to look at the information. But that time is just about up. We're going to lose it unless we do something. And I think this would just add to that whole system, especially with as many people travel up and down 377 every day and coming in and out of the county from the south. Put those two cameras, and that'll keep us in this, being able to use those cameras for the future.
This is, this is good for Amber Alerts, Silver Alert, stolen vehicles. It's like having an officer sitting there reading every license plate that drives by. And, and not only that, but it allows access to all those other cameras nationwide.
Yep. It's, it's pretty amazing.
It's a great tool. It's a great tool. Any other? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize the county judge to sign a contract and enter into agreement with Flock Safety Cameras to purchase two Safety Falcon cameras from Fund 55, authorizing the amount to spend up to $16,000 with a recurring cost per camera of $3,000. And included, you know, the fact that, you know, the Flock group is a sole source for this type of camera. And the sole source agenda signature is right here.
Question? Just budget the $16,000. The $3,000 will be out of Roger's regular budget for after this year.
Well, the, the maintenance, this was a question I had late yesterday with Drew and Sean. This is IT-related. It's software.
Yeah.
So the ongoing maintenance will, Drew confirmed that it would come out of his budget.
Just making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At that, I'll second it.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the county judge to sign a contract and enter into agreement with Flock Safety Cameras to purchase two Safety Falcon contracts from Fund 55, authorize the amount to spend up to $16,000. And the recurring cost per year of $3,000 is to come from the IT budget. Is that?
It's $3,000 per camera. So it's a total of $6,000 that will come out of IT.
Is that agreeable with y'all?
Yes.
Okay. That's the motion. All right.
Second.
Shall I say who's second?
Yeah, Andrews.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in agreement say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Four to one, did you say? You said four?
Yes.
Okay. Four to one. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I think I just saw Jim Sabonis walk in.
Okay. Mr. Sabonis, you're up. Discuss county capital improvement program, including projects, timing, and funding. How are you doing, sir?
Doing very well.
Good.
Good to be here. Bear with me one second.
I asked, I can just kind of introduce you for a second. I asked Mr. Sabonis to help us out today with understanding what is before us and what options we have for sources to complete capital projects that may come before the court this fiscal year. In addition to debt options, the county has fund balance of $17 million and assigned fund balance of $13 million. Understanding what those can, can and can't be used for or what has already been allocated would help us with some decision-making that we have coming, coming to us soon and probably ongoing through the fiscal year. So thank you for driving over. And I'm sorry you got stuck in traffic. But thank you so much.
Commissioner, I actually left my, a copy of the presentation. Can you have a copy I can send over to you?
Sure.
I thought it was about 10 things for the county. I think this is. Good morning. My name's Jim Sabonis. I'm with Hilltop Securities. I've been fortunate to be the financial advisor for the county for a number of years. And I'm proud to say I play a small part. But you, the commissioners, and your staff have, have done a great job managing this county. And a couple of things I want to point out is that you currently have double A-plus rating.
Is your speaker on? Is that green light on?
It is on.
Okay. Yeah, that's a lot better. You need to, yeah.
The county's in a very strong financial condition. It's a double A-plus rating, which is an outstanding rating, equivalent to the state of Texas itself. And, and what I've been asked to do was to, over the last couple of years, the county's been planning on managing its INSS tax rate. And right now, we actually have an INSS tax rate of 2.5 cents. I want to indicate that over the last few years through a combination of growing of your taxless value and a planned prepayment of debt, we've reduced our, our debt service where we have just really one year, a partial year of debt service left. And so the presentation that I prepared for you was to do two things. One was to fund specifically road and other public improvements by issuing a short-term tax note with the thought that, I know on the horizon, there's a potential requirement to expand the jail and that the, the thought process would be that we have our 2.5 cents, we may, may maintain our 2.5 cents until we determine the amount and timing of our jail funding. With thought that best practice for a management of a miss, of a county would be, we don't want our tax rate to go down and then have the expansion take our tax rate back up. So I did three scenarios at the direction of Commissioner Samuelson, one, three, and five-year scenario. And what we would do, would do competitive bid process for financial institutions based on your double A-plus rating. And so one-year scenario, which, when I mean one-year scenario, we'd sell a one-year note. It would be approved by the Attorney General of Texas and allow for our INSS tax levy. But we, we have the funds that are currently being levied this year to pay it off, and we would pay it off before the end of the year. Based on estimated interest rate of 5.25%, we, we would actually be able to fund $2,800,000, generating a project fund of about $2,760,000. If we did a three-year note, and our assumption is that we have no growth in value and we maintain our current ad valorem INSS tax rate of 2.548 cents, we would fund about 8.2 million of road improvements, generating, again, being paid off in three years. And then on a five-year scenario, again, same concept, no growth in value, same current INSS tax rate, we would generate approximately $13 million of, of par amount of the note and 12.8 million of project funds. And so the, the county's already done this, the INSS tax levy. We actually have the ability to fund a one-year, three-year, or five-year note without raising taxes, without using any growth in value with expectation that, that we will grow, but that we didn't take that consideration. And so it's a very straightforward process. And, and so as I've discussed with Becky previously, and previously the Commissioners' Court, and, and in more detail explored with Commissioner Samuelson, the county's in a great position. And virtually, at the end of the year, we have no debt outstanding. We actually have an INSS levy in place, anticipating that we would issue some debt. And the question is, it would be a, a one-year, three-year, five-year, or some other number. And I, I picked one-year, three-year, or five-year just to show options. When it really, from here, what we would do is take what you're trying to fund and, and put that in place. One other caveat I'd also would say is that if we go a three- or five-year scenario, while I showed you the capacity at a 2.5% tax rate, what we would add is taking consideration, if you're going to fund expansion of the jail in the future, we might structure the debt so that when we did our jail funding and when we absorbed that, there would no be any increase. You know, we, we want, maybe we would think forward what would take place and make sure that the debt structure of this note would allow for the issuance of whatever needs to be funded for the jail in the future. And so that's in summary. So in summary, it's a very straightforward process. If, if the commissioner's determined to move forward, they would just direct us to work with their staff to go for, organize a competitive sale. We put together a, a package of information and send it to all the typical investors for tax-exempt, that we would receive bids and, and present them to Commissioners' Court. If the Commissioners' Courts accept it, it would be approved, submitted to the Attorney General. And the Attorney General in Texas approves all debt issuance. And, and it's just a formality to make sure that all administrative processes and procedures have taken place based on our current statutory law. And, and from a timing perspective, we would take about a month. So hypothetically, if you said to move forward on a three-year note, we'd be ready as early as one month. And when I say a month, it takes about a week to pull all the information together. We distribute that. The interested investors then may have some questions. We'll coordinate with the staff any responses. They go through credit committee and prove, and then they would bid on that day. In fact, last night, I was out very late, and we had a very similar type process. Received seven bids, very cost-efficient and, and effective marketplace. And to give you a feel that, well, the market, you hear news about the economy was taking place in the market. As Texans, we should be proud. Our economy is among the strongest in the country. And so while the overall market can be choppy, investors look to Texas. And there's a very deep and competitive group of bidders who are looking to deploy capital. And they come to Texas because they know we're growing in, in your county as, on the top of the list of growing, strong counties. We expect a, a competitive, successful sale. So to summarize, county's in excellent position. We've already got INSS tax levy in place, anticipating that you would do some note or debt issuance this year. These were just three options, and I can do other options and scenarios if chosen or actually execute one of these. So that kind of summarizes where I am from my points I mentioned here.
What was that one-year number again, please?
A one-year, based on the current tax levy that you have, we would actually be able to issue on a $2,836,000, generating, after the cost to, to do the transaction, generating $2,760,000 of project fees.
So are these certificates of obligation?
No, this would be a tax note. And, and?
What'd you call it?
A tax note. And, and, and one of the differences is that in the state of Texas, counties are authorized to issue debt a variety of ways, tax notes, certificate obligation, general obligation bonds. They all have the same credit pledge, the credit of your levy of an interest in seeking tax, which is that double A-plus. But the difference is that based on how you authorize them. And in a tax note, since we're limited to a seven-year maturity from the time we issue it, we just have to pass it by action of the county. Where on a certificate of obligation, there's a process where a publication takes place, allowing a, a potential petition process. And, and, and that can actually go up to 40 years and to be fun. But they, they both can fund the same items, with the difference being that the tax note being a short amortization, that, that, that it's just a single action by the, the Commissioners' Court.
I had another question. My mind just went blank. It's, that's a product of getting old. The different, oh, okay, here's, here was my question. Would this be considered a specific purpose or a general purpose? Or can we, do we have to, does it have to be for a specific purpose, the tax note?
Well, on a tax note or any debt that the county issues, there's, there's a practicality in the art of how you're doing it. So again, we have to indicate what we intend to spend the money. And, and we could be general, and we could say, we're going to make general improvements to our roads and expansion of our roads. We can be specific. We're going to make an improvement to XYZ Road. We can do a combination. And, and it, it depends on what the goal of, of the Commissioners would be and how they want to designate the money. You know, our, our thought is to indicate what is You know, our, our thought is to indicate what it's going to be used for with reasonable certainty, but add some flexibility.
Right, right.
But, but the, the concept is that we do have to indicate, and, and what I mean by an example, what indication is that, let's say you want to move, purchase a rolling stock that might use in the, in the rehabilitation or construction of roads. We'd have to put that in there, that we're going to, right away, and all the other things related to road construction and some equipment. So, we'd, we'd have to indicate that in, in the purpose that we're doing. And so, what you'll see is, and commonly, we've done this here before, and it's done every time, is like, you know, a list of items that would be done. And then the lawyers get involved, and they take those items and, and indicate it. So, you, you might see some general language that would indicate, you know, hypothetically, rolling stock, maintenance of facility roads. But we have to have at least general categories, and we're limited to those general categories. And, and again, I use an example where, you know, if we're, if we intend to do some maintenance of facility or equipment in a facility versus rolling stock versus roads, you know, we have to indicate what we're going to do. And it's not uncommon to have a primary purpose, maybe a secondary purpose if, if the bid's coming lower than anticipated from that process.
But we could, we could do something, like you said, like roads, for instance, and not specify a particular road area. We could just, no matter where in the county we decide to utilize that fund, or some funds, we would delegate it to roads, but we could, we wouldn't have to specify which roads, correct?
Correct. And, and, and the thought process and the general practice that takes place would be, they use Commissioners, dedicate what roads when you do your actual budgeting and allocation of those funds. So, you have the flexibility to do growths and improvements. But the specific roads and amounts funded will be done as a follow-up in, in, in discussion and approval as you actually move forward with the programs. Very common to do that with the, the thought that change in dynamics, what road needs to be improved when, winter storm takes out, floods a road, you know, you want to add to the list. So, the thought is that you internally have a designated list of projects that's, that's kind of an active, dynamic list that'll change. You know, have some absolute priorities, but some that during the year you may evolve as you go forward.
So, if you interpolate out what you've given us, for instance, on a seven-year tax note, which is the max, right? You, you'd be looking at potentially maybe 20 million?
I, I, I would think that, that we're probably looking more in the range of, I, I would interpolate the difference between the, the three and the five, which is, you know, 4.7. So, I'm thinking somewhere more, and I'll actually give you actual numbers, but we're thinking probably more in the 17, 18 million.
Okay, okay.
And, and a couple of points that are kind of interesting. We kept the, in this case, we actually showed a slight increase in interest rates. But I actually believe having priced a number of transactions recently, you know, the Fed has, has, has actually manipulated short-term interest rates with their policy at the government. And, and right now, to give you a feel, it's just more common that I deal with this, but if you took a 10-year, 10-year maturity versus a one-year maturity, right now, 10-year maturity is about 70 basis point lower than a one-year maturity. And so, if, if we actually have, the one-year would actually be the highest interest rate, and they would slightly decline over time, if that makes sense. So, but, but we use more traditional pricing to try to be conservative in this, this case.
You're reading my mind. I was going to ask you about interest rates going out. If you, if the indication was that they would actually be lower going towards a longer term.
Yeah. It just-
Maybe a couple, I mean, maybe not much, but a little bit lower.
But it's interesting, just we're in an unusual scenario here. But we actually have a slight increase, just to be conservative.
What's the prime right now?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm used to more tax exempt rates, but to, to, but I, I think that we're at like 450 on the, on the Fed interbarring rate. But in these notes, the one thing I will say is that, that we're in a unique time where, when we're looking at the investors, especially investors in these type of notes, that while we look at overall interest rates, having dealt with this, they're really looking at alternative options for investment. And so, we compete not just against other miscurtis, but on the short-term basis, we're primarily banks or the purchasers. You know, we're competing with their ability to make mortgages or home car loans, things of that nature. But, but I, I do think that the Fed gave some clear indication that we're kind of at a holding period for right now. Maybe long-term, they're going to try to bring rates down. But I, I, I don't see in the near term any expectation, expected, expectation of increase. And I, I do think that with these rates, we would be able to exceed them from recent experience. And a couple of the points I'll just mention, and, and, and again, we don't, our goal is not to borrow to invest, but, you know, I, I do believe based on the current market interest rates, we'll be able to borrow and invest and offset our interest costs if we spend the money. You know, we, short-term investment rates are higher than our short-term borrowing rates as they are traditionally.
So, that would be net zero then? Because according to the, according to the regulation, we can't make money off investments on borrowed money. So, it would just offset to zero.
Yeah. And, and I will say that, that on the arbitrage rebate, there are some exemptions that, in, in the case of a quick spend-down, the, we'll be able to keep any arbitrage that we have. And my suspicion, you would use this money pretty quickly. And if we, there are some numbers, but worst-case scenario, we don't, we can't make money, but we might be able to keep some interest.
But just looking at the overall place of where the county is and things that we need to do, and, okay, this is one, the source of funds to be able to do some capital projects, but we also have fund balance. And so, I would like for you to talk about that, or if Becky wants to come up and talk about the difference between assigned fund balance and fund balance, and if there's any opportunity there to use some of that, those funds to do some of the work that we need to do.
Are we moving to Adam 7? Is that what you're?
No, well, I mean, this isn't the policy. This is talking about capital.
Okay. Sorry, I'll shut up.
No, no good question. Just including timing and funding, this is one of the funding sources that we have.
Well, and let me broadly address that.
Okay.
And again, I think when a county funds debt, it's not much different than when an individual funds debt. So, we have to start look at the debt issue, but you, I mean, the common questions that would be answered in a multi-year capital improvement program be, you know, what are our sources of revenue that we have funded? And what are the other costs we have? So, you know, I'm showing you just a tax note here. And again, I want to stress that the tax note we have is absorb our current INSS tax levy at minimum for a one-year issue, or potentially, if you decide to fund more. But it's going forward that, that, you know, the common practice would be to say, what, what, what resources do we have and was our plan go forward? Currently, my records and I did bring this up when, when we talked to the rating agencies. We indicated that the county had a, a fund balance policy of 120 days of cash on hand. So, 120 days, roughly one-third of your operating expenses was, was the policy we've indicated to the public previously, which supported our double A-plus rating. But historically and currently, we have significantly more than that in, in that process. And from a rating perspective, the rating agencies recognize we have more, and we have had a practice of keeping more. But from a investor perspective, they, they assume that the 120 days is where we're really going to be evaluated on. So, so the, the concept is, as, as you move forward in determining, using your source of fund to fund road improvements and expansion to other county facilities is, is, is 120 days your policy is adequate? If you decide that it is, or it can be done, you might decide to take the excess about it and take that excess and put into a capital fund and use it to contribute to funding projects so you don't have to issue debt. It's a common practice. I know later we'll be talking about that, but, so to me, it's, it's to what unrestricted, unassigned cash you have, to me, that's available to be spent. And the general best practice would be it's better to spend it on either funding a capital item or reducing your debt than to use it to subsidize your operating fund, which we haven't done here. So, I, I do think that, that we have excess funds above our fund balance policy. Those funds are there for a couple of purposes. One, they're, they're in case of emergency. Torrential hits knocks out a building, and you need to rent facilities, you have fund balance available. And that wasn't in your budget, that wouldn't upset your budget because you're on an annual tax levy basis. Hasn't happened in a while, but it has happened previously where oil and gas industry slowed down, tax values dropped. Tax rate we had last year wouldn't support the expense we have this year. Do we, we expect, uh, 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 re, I mean, values to, to come back to where they were? Do we subsidize for a, a small period of time? And, and so, I, I think that fund balance is there for emergencies, for understanding if something would take place. Just as someone has money in the bank. As my wife told me when I was driving home from a meeting last night, that our, our heater went out. So, I'll be spending some of my funds from the bank, spending, buying a new heater or paying somebody to repair the one I have in the next couple of days. And, and that's what fund balance is. And that, and so, we have 120, and, and, and you have more than 120. So, I think you have, easily have excess. And I think 120 is a really strong policy. I mean, one-third, especially given the fact that your, your majority of your revenues come from ad-va-lor taxes that are not very variable. And, and it's hard for me to understand a significant decrease. So, I, I think it's a pretty healthy balance. But you, as Commissioners, make that decision with input from your staff of what the appropriate dollar amount is. So, I think you have some funds available there. And, and, and also, you know, funds, and, and kind of again, as part of a multi-year plan, which we, we're, we're helping some clients who issue debt more often is to understand what funds they have available, what one-time receipts that they'll use to, to reduce their debt issuance when they have to issue debt in the process. So, I, I do think, I know you'll be talking about fund balance, but again, my, my understanding is in it, I've got the rating reports here preparing for this, is that we have a practice and policy of 120 days. But history says we, we've been significantly higher than that. And again, it's one reason why you have high credit and why your tax rate's so low. But the thought is that those funds would be available to fund some projects and expectation that, that even if you pulled down to 120 and you put that in one-time expenditures, you know, you're still a very strong liquid entity.
So, on a, on a $40 million general fund, 120 would be $10 million.
Would be about one-third, so I'm thinking maybe somewhere like 13.
13, okay. So, that's, that's currently what's in our, our-
At least, as my understanding of policy and what, what was indicated when we talked to the rating agencies over the years in that process.
Okay, so we, yeah, so there are two, which hopefully Becky can come and speak to this. And we have assigned fund balance and fund balance. And between the two of those, there's about $30 million. So, I think based on what you're saying, unless those are designated for something specific, which I'm not aware of, we do have some opportunities as a source of funding for, in a capital project that may come up this calendar year or fiscal year.
Have we introduced Mr. Sabonis to, going to be the, the new county auditor here? Stephanie Matlock here?
She's Matlock, she's, we're you.
This is who you're going to be working with after in January?
So, when I started as auditor in '17, I'd been here about five minutes. And Commissioner Barton said, "We need to build a library expansion," which I'm like, "Okay." And I called Jim, and within three weeks, you had the funds. We did a seven-year note on that. We paid that off in three. And we've refueled two notes since then, and we paid everything off as early as we could. That's why you're here. That's why your fund balance is where it is. That's why you have the rating that you do. The difference between assign, assign is like a savings account. And however you want to spend this money, you make that decision. I just ask that you be prudent and careful, because we worked hard to get here. Try to keep us, with, with the money we have. It's a good balance, but whatever you, whatever the court decides to do. But we've done really well, started at 32 million. We're down to 1.5 million on bonded debt and 4.7 for Crescent Bypass. So, y'all are in good shape. We've talked about the jail expansion. I've said by the time you get it built, you will have Crescent paid off, the Crescent Bypass paid off. You're going to free up 1.18 million a year for whatever you need to do. There's your salaries. There's hiring the doctor for the jail. So, y'all are in a very unique position to move forward with pretty much anything you want to do. So, Godspeed. Thank y'all.
Yeah. Fund balance is just a fancy word to say, and it's like a savings account, isn't it?
But there's certain, there's certain ones, I mean, if it's earmarked for something specific, then it's not available. But you're saying of the 30 million that's here, there's nothing, no millions that are earmarked for something specific that would be hands-off?
I want to look at our expenditures.
Okay.
Before I answer that, I want to see what we spend every month to give you a good answer.
Okay.
Because like I had told y'all during budget hearings, we are not receiving the property tax we asked for. We're not getting all of it, which is a concern. And I believe, I can't swear to this, I believe we're 600,000 short, and they're done. They're done. I don't know why we won't get this. Ron doesn't know, bless his heart. Caught him off-guard, sorry. But I don't know, that's, that's a hefty sum of money. So, that's one of, that's what I talked about during the budget hearings. So, before I answer that, I need to see where we are.
Okay, that's fair. I just, I'm just trying to look at the big picture. And we have, which is the next couple down on the agenda, we have, you know, several things facing us. And if we have the ability to fund those things, then, and it's the best thing to do for the county, then, you know, we need to talk about those. So, I was trying to get-
Need to spend it.
No, I, I, I understand that, but we also don't need to keep taxpayers' money.
No, ma'am, but remember when the auditor came and talked about the audit? He said how blessed we are to be here, that other counties would like to have this type of reserve, that a lot of counties strive to get to a six-month operating expense budget in the bank. We're about there.
All right. So, before we, we're kind of segueing into the next topic, which is fund balance policies. Or anything else anybody wants to say about capital projects, planning, timing, sources of funds? Mr. Sabonis, any final words on that?
The only, only point I would make is that, I presented this, and as a follow-up, the Commissioners work with the, the existing and new auditor. Any scenarios you want, we'll run and we'll follow up till you have an action plan for, for you to go forward.
In the short time that I've known Mr. Sabonis, he's been a wealth of knowledge, and I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate what you've done and how you've worked with Becky Kidd, because Monday morning, I see Stephanie shaking her head with me. We're in good position here, so if we had to Monday morning quarterback this situation, I don't think I'd want to do anything any different than what we've been doing. Would you agree with that, Mr. Sabonis?
No, I, first of all, I congratulate you. This county is well-run, it's very efficient on every metric. And working with many counties, there's none that are as efficient as you are. But I do say that, I do think that there can be some thought. When you have money, you should really think about the future. I do think legislatively, Austin officials are doing some things to limit how we generate funds. And, and you're going to be continuing to grow, and your needs will be continuing to grow. And I think when you have funding, it's a good time to, to actually set aside that. And, and again, the thought being that you have a policy, and we have an excess of that policy in place. a policy, and we have an excess of that policy in place. And I actually believe that it might, might have a little bit more definition, might assist you going forward. And what I mean by that, and I'm using hypotheticals, that if you determine 120 is the minimum, you often see fund policies written where we like to have a fund balance, I'm just hypothetical, and compare some statistics that you have, ranging from 120 to 150 days. And what it would say is that our goal is to have a minimum of 120 days. But if we get up to 150 days at the end of the year, above 150 days, we might actually take and transfer some of that to some designated accounts. Those accounts might be an equipment replacement fund, a rolling stock replacement fund, you know, jail maintenance fund. And so you start funding some things, and you have a practice to say a minimum, a maximum, and what takes place when you have more than a maximum. And so that those funds then can clearly indicate to someone, you want to prevent a scenario, to say, you have a lot of cash, why are you taxing us? We should reduce our annual tax rate. You know, the thought is, I believe, having talked and worked with Becky for years, that those funds are actually, in your strategy and the staff strategy, they are committed to specific projects. And I think formally designating them gives a better understanding of what's taking place from that perspective. You know, again, it might be a capital funding project with which cash will be to reduce debt needed for the jail expansion. But the thought is in having read through these policies that were circulated, you know, to me, the real key is, and you're in a unique situation, that you could put, you know, best practice might be to put a policy in place that says we'll have a range, and when we get above the max in our range, instead of just having excess cash, we'll start to actually designate what we're going to do that. And in most cases, it means that you don't call me to issue debt, that you fund your projects with cash, and you have an ongoing source of those projects. And I think there's a number of things that you spend funds on annually that having those funds actually reduce the burden long-term for the taxpayers. So again, I think you're doing everything right. The thought might be just to formalize some of the actual good practices you have in place for you.
Well, that's been a, you know, this fund balance, when you get north of 120 days, it's something, when you, you end up with a six or seven-month unassigned fund balance. And, you know, there's, there can be, it's a policy issue at some point. And I like the idea of a max and a minimum, or a minimum and a maximum range, because, and then earmarking if it goes above that, or maybe not earmarking it, but having certain places potentially to go. Because, you know, there's, there's been some policy disagreement on how much the fund balance ought to be. And I shoot more for the lower side because I don't like the idea of taking taxpayers' money and putting it in a savings account. I don't think that's our job. We do have to have backup, and I agree with that. And the 120 to 150 is certainly reasonable, a reasonable range. So I appreciate you explaining that. And again, at the end of the day, it's just a policy decision. Some people think we ought to have six or seven months, you know, extra, and some think we don't really need that much. And it's, there's no right, there's probably not a right or wrong to it. It's just what that person thinks is the best way to go. So I appreciate the, appreciate the explanation there.
Anything else? If not, thank you for coming down here, Mr. Sabonis.
Thank you.
Be careful. Don't get stopped by the train in Crescent here.
Okay.
Just call Chief Becker. He can, he can call the, he's got a lot of pull with the railroad.
Yeah.
He could get them to open it up for you.
Because they actually, they wouldn't let me come through town. They had it blocked off.
Okay.
We're not done. We're not done.
We're not done. We're not done with this. I mean, that was a gen, okay. So now we're moving on to the, which one is the Tina signed up to speak on?
All right. Yes. Tina, you signed up for both of them.
I did, because they were very vague. I didn't understand. I mean, what did this say?
Well, I hope it's clarified for you. Mr. Sabonis talks down to you so that fund balance is a savings account.
You know, so when I read this, I thought we were gonna, that there was a capital improvement program, and we were going to get updates about the project's timing and funding. But I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name.
Jim.
Sabonis.
Sabonis. And I'm guessing he's some kind of financial advisor for the county?
Yes.
Is it, okay. Because another part of getting old is we can't hear so well back in the back. And he speaks really quiet and not right into the microphone.
Ms. Brown, he has been working with the county for as long as I've been here. Jim, how long have you been working with the county?
Two decades.
Twenty years.
Oh, you didn't pick him up hitchhiking coming in here?
Well, he might have gotten here faster. So did, did I understand that he provided info to the court that y'all were discussing? Because we did not, you know, back there, we're trying to figure out what you're talking about. You're throwing all kinds of numbers out.
Yeah.
Did he provide information for y'all before?
He did, but it was too late to, it missed the deadline, so I couldn't add it to the agenda. By the time I received it, it was too late to make.
Okay. So is it available so that we can look it over later and, you know, know what was being said and what was being discussed and all that? So the only capital improvement thing that I know about that this court has been about, been talking about for the last couple of years is the new jail. But I didn't, I mean, I only heard y'all mention roads. So I don't know. So I was, it's a very confusing, vague thing. And this might have been better as a workshop, maybe a workshop in the future to be able to understand some of this better. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This brings us down to item number 10.
Oh, we're down seven. We skipped.
We have another screen?
Seven.
I don't have any.
We're going to create a fund balance policy, which we.
So do you want me to kick it off? Or did you want to introduce it, Judge?
I thought we were discussing that kind of thing. We talked about fund balance. Discuss adopting a written, all right, this is number seven then. Discuss adopting a written fund balance policy.
So this is related, but it's a separate discussion. While doing research and looking through this, I'm trying to understand the difference between all the different types of fund balance. I ran across counties that actually have written fund balance policies. I included two of them in the agenda. One is Chambers County, which is in South Texas down by Houston, and one is Fannin County. Those are included in the budget, are included in the packet. They're different, just serving as examples. After listening to Mr. Sabonis and his expertise, going through what these two counties have in place, just thought it would be a good idea. We don't currently have a written fund balance policy, so I just wanted to put it on here and bring it up for discussion. There's no action to be taken today, but just a discussion.
Well, I think that, given the fact that we have Stephanie Matlock that's going to take over beginning January 1 of 2024, that her input in this, and she's going to be this, that we should table this and let her work with Mr. Sabonis and with us. So that you can, would you like to have that opportunity since it's going to be one of your deal? That's what I'd like to do. So I don't mind having a written, a policy to do it. But I think that we should have input in from Ms. Matlock in it with Mr. Sabonis. You've only been here 21 years. Hill Feinberg still up there with y'all, too?
He still is. He's still in the office every day, though. He's not formally on the management team, but he's, he's still our, I'll tell him you said hello. He hired me a long time ago, 30 years ago.
That's what I'm saying. So this is a good partnership, but I'd like your input on this thing, too. And we don't have to do anything today on this thing. Let's wait until you get your feet more wet than what they are right now on this thing. But I'd like, you.
If you would, I, I might compare your county to these two counties to talk a little about their policies. And I've studied them, and I'm.
Would you, would you mind doing, putting the mic a little, yeah, thank you.
Let me say that there are two policies that were circulated. And again, let's use as a reference point that right now, we have, we're in a great position where we have over 50% of our operating, annual operating cost in reserves. And we were talking somewhere in 120 to maybe 150. I'm just saying, those are the numbers I referenced. We had referred as a policy previously, 120 days would be equal to four months of operating expenses. And I'll start with Chambers County. And there's, again, there's a lot of pages, and there's references to the Government Officer Finance Association and some national county Finance Officers Association. But when it really comes down to policies, these policies are actually pretty short. One's six pages, and one's two, two pages. And they include in other things. But I was saying, Chambers County, I'm going to actually kind of summarize how limited it is. And I think, and there's no doubt that we'll do a better job, your county will do a better job on this. But in their county, it says, the county's goal is to achieve an unassigned fund balance equal to 25% of expenditures, three months. And it considers a balance of 50% a cause for concern. So it's really got a range of 15 to 25. And this indicates that if it falls below the goal, it's considered deficiency, and they're going to work to put it up. Just two very small paragraphs. In the case of Fannin County, they indicate that their target, three months of fund balance, based on the most recent current fiscal year. And they actually have in their policy, if it goes down by, from, from 23 to 25%, you know, they have to replace it in two years. If it goes down less than that, they have to replace it in one year. And my experience is, again, just kind of just throw this out there. So my advice would be, would be that, then again, I think everyone has to look at and say, what is your policy? What, are you comfortable with cash? Different counties, municipalities, schools, everyone has their understanding what they feel comfortable with. I can tell you that I'm more conservative than my brother with his idea of cash. It means mostly calling me up on weekends and kind of borrow some money. And versus my idea, I guess, my nature, my job is to be pretty conservative. So I think setting your policy, and I do think the concept of range is good. And I'm more interested in documenting what you do with excess funds. Because if you don't sign with excess funds, there have been cases, and there's a rare case where people would say, give the money back. There's rare cases where people have gotten an ad lib tax rebate at the end of the year from someone, which I found unusual. The next year, they raise your taxes. You know, I do, I do think that there's a number of areas from best practice would be say, if we have money above our high target, we would transfer those funds to a variety of accounts that would be one-time expenditures. And in general, those accounts reduce your requirement to issue debt or prepay debt that's outstanding and makes the county more efficient. It's actually something you've done on practice on an ongoing basis. You've taken that cash, and you've paid down debt. I think each of the last four years, we prepaid debt significantly, saving hundreds of thousands of interest. And as far as repaying it, and this is from practical experiences, when, there have been places where I've actually had emergencies where fund balance got drawn down. But I've learned that in those cases, going to policy doesn't make sense. You have to look and understand what's happening, you know, and, and come up with a plan that makes sense at that time, whether it's try to get there. And again, usually the first issue is if we have to draw it down, fund balance means that our operating revenues didn't generate enough of our operating costs. And so the first goal is how do we get back in line? And it might mean for one more year, we draw it down more, and then we start coming back up. But I don't believe there's a formula. I think you have to look at each specific case and say, what caused it? And I can tell you, working with the communities near here, when the, the gas well drilling and workover walked away, we saw values drop significantly. We saw sales tax drop significantly. And, you know, we, it wasn't just replenishment, it's just how do you right-size your budget? It really takes some thought to say, what's going to happen going forward? And so my thought would be, I wouldn't put in exactly what our plan is, not knowing what our issue is at the time. I do think it's indication that we, you know, our goal would be back to, again, to initially, not to worry about fund balance, but worry about providing services cost-effectively to the citizens. So there's no break in services. And then determining over time where you go with your fund balance process. And I've actually seen in some cases where I've had a couple of communities that have, have had some challenges where they might have had fund balance, but a combination of growth and other issues have made them rethink how they're going to do their fund balance, and they brought it down because they didn't want to increase taxes, and they wanted to use cash and to provide services to people. So I, so I would say that these policies be a good foundation. But my suggestion, working with your senior staff here, is to come up with a policy that, that meets your goals, gives you direction with excess, and states that how you'll deal with any, any drawdown on your minimum. But that decision will be made at that time. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And I've, in the past, it hadn't been the last year, but I've spent a lot of time reviewing this Gatsby 54 and some of the bulletins that go with it. And I'm looking at the two examples that we've got, I agree with you that I think there's, and of course, you're going to have to work with our auditing on the work in progress with it. But I think that there's a policy somewhere between those two that will fit for our county. And I like the idea, you know, because part of the, part of the idea about Gatsby 54 was to replace some older terms that they used to use and have clearly, that's separated into five different categories, and have clearly defined descriptions of each category. And I, I think that that's imperative, especially if folks want to get copies of what we're doing, or they want to look at it, that we will have something that's clearly defined that they can look at and see what we're doing. And the, basically, from a transparency standpoint. So I look forward to you guys working together on this.
I've got two questions specifically. One, out of the 254 counties in the state of Texas have a fund balance policy written. Two, second question would be, and I don't expect answers today, would be counties our size, you know, how many of those have, and what are, what are their positions and their policies if they have one?
Well, I'll, I'll work with the staff, and I'll follow up and provide answers to those.
Right. I mean, you know, like I say, I don't expect an answer on those today. But I think before we adopt the policy here in Hood County, that we have to address those issues.
Well, and let me say, I'm going to address the first question you asked in a little different mode. I think the well-run, the well-run counties generally have financial policies, you know, meaning that policies and procedures are important for good financial management. And what the balances are, I can do a poll, and I'll have some.
Thank you.
Responses back to you. And as a follow-up, I'd like to say one thing that I think is important, also have policy in place. Because over the last couple legislative terms, our state legislature have been intrusive in how we raise revenues. And there has been talk, you know, I can tell you that other of my clients, peers of yours, have discussed putting policies in place so that they don't look at cash on hand and think that's available revenue for the following year when they do their tax rate. You know, they were actually starting to, to look at, at not just revenue growth, but cash on hand as part of that overall process. And having a policy and indicating where those, those funds are and what they're to be used for, kind of prevents them from actually saying, we're going to grab them to adjust your tax rate the following year.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sabonis.
We'll readdress this at some later date.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
You want to, please, please.
Well, Jack actually asked one.
We're going to get you an office right up here. Get you a chair right there, Ms. Brown. Go ahead.
I know you're kidding with me. I did, I was wondering, too, how many, how many counties, and I hadn't thought about size, but that's probably, probably the bigger counties do this. I don't, I think maybe we probably do need a policy, but I hope it's somewhere closer to the two pages of Chambers and not the 97 pages of Fannin.
Nine, not 97.
No. No, I pulled it up, it was ninety-seven pages, it said one of ninety-seven. I didn't click through them all. Was it just nine pages? Maybe my computer screen was, okay, I didn't print it and I didn't read it, but this, and also, I know that you
Yep.
Well, this is their, that might be their entire.
Yeah, but it says ninety-seven.
Okay. It's just six pages. They might have a larger financial policy, but their fund balance policy is just six pages.
Well, when I pulled it up, it said one of ninety-seven and I wasn't going to print that out.
Yeah, no.
But I did notice that this, and I don't know if this is true in all the counties, but this is just signed by the judge and the county clerk. The, I guess, it's not a court, it's just signed by the judge. So I don't know if, if, if the other ones are that way.
Uh-uh. It's signed by all.
The one from Chambers County?
Fannin.
The one from Chambers County is only signed by the judge.
Well, you asked if they were all like this, so Fannin is not.
Okay, well, so is there a policy on that? I mean, whose, whose decision is?
We would do it as a court.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Let me throw in something for clarification. A lot of those other pages are Gatsby. Most of them are the government standards and they just attached it. But the policy is six pages plus a cover. You can, you can thank the federal government for the other ninety pages.
I think from a, a best practice standpoint, we need to be able to decipher between what other counties are doing, whether those are best practices or not, whether it's a best practice for us to do it. And so I would just keep that in, you know, and I really look forward to working with, you know, having Stephanie here and allowing her some time to get in
Okay, we're going
knee-deep and get on, you know, get this
All right.
Bring this back to court. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to number ten. Now, y'all waiting for number ten up here? The ARPA
Can we take a break real quick? This one may take a little time.
Yeah, let's do, take a break. Let's take a break.
Thank you.
Near the two-hour bar.
Okay, it's seven minutes after eleven, we're back in session. And next item is item number ten, consider and take appropriate action on project funding requests made through the ARPA grant application process. Funding may be dispersed through ARPA funds, capital funds, or other financing sources. And I would suggest that we do this by department, one at a time, like the sheriff's department, then volunteer fire departments, and then the EMS, et cetera, down through here. So I would suggest, let's start with the sheriff's department. His is the first one that we've got the information on. So Sheriff Deeds, you were going to come up here and tell us what you need or what your department needs.
Well, I went back and got new quotes because it'd been so long on the, the quotes that we had got on all that information. And so I submitted that to you yesterday. I can't remember, later in the afternoon, so sent it by email. So the grand total is five twenty-seven, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, but I did not put that, the semunitions back in there. I thought about that after I hit send, but, so everything went up as far as, and I went with, since you guys gave me the extra six people, then everything was figured on thirty-six rifles, thirty-six vests. The ten night vision stayed the same, but the cost went up on the plates. Cost went up a little bit on everything, so those kind of supplies are going over to the Middle East, so it's probably going to stay continuing to go up, get higher prices as time goes on, so. But that's the quote that, that's in effect, and I sent you guys that, all the quotes on email.
Oh, I did have one question just occurred to me here. Is that, is this stuff deliverable within the ARPA window? Are they going to have, do they have this stuff sitting on a shelf ready? You had mentioned the Middle East. Is it going to be outside that December twenty-sixth window?
Things have slowed down a little bit because they're shipping so much overseas, but I wasn't told that there was going to be a problem if we put in an order.
Okay, okay.
So, I know I've talked a lot over the last few months on all of this, so appreciate anything that you can do for us. I did put on that number five, the twenty sets of ballistic glass and the panel packages and for twenty of them, the last quote was one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred, and that, they said, didn't change. So that's the front glass, the side glass, and the panel in the door of the, for the Tahos, the main ones that are out there in patrol.
Okay. Okay, any commissioner have any questions, or the sheriff? None?
Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Okay. The next, I guess, is the volunteer fire departments up here. You don't have anything to say to you, Chief Becker? You always get here like, did the custodians open up for you this morning at six o'clock? You're number one again to speak on this thing. You know, we got all of y'all's ones.
We got everything. We've spent, you've been kind with your time through the two workshops and everything. The only thing I would add is, it's not a surprise to you from years back that you see several departments saying they need the tanker trucks. We needed one, but obviously we've gotten ours from a different source. But I do want to make sure you understand that without the facilities, these are not usable trucks. We can't have these trucks sitting out and the water freeze in them, and you can't drain them real easy. So you have to have facilities to store these type of trucks, to make sure that they're ready to go. Statistically, we fight more fires in the wintertime because of heating. And I would just encourage you, as you consider the, the need for those sort of trucks, to remember, such as in our case, that without the facility, the truck almost becomes useless because we can't let them freeze.
I don't want to be negotiating here with you because I know what a great job all of y'all do. I wish we had enough money to give every one of you just exactly what you really did need. But could we do some kind of a shed type for some of the other trucks that doesn't need to have that? And put the new tanker truck that you, the pumper tanker that you did get, with the tremendous foresight that you've got, got the jump on everybody from forestry service, keep that inside where it doesn't freeze, and then put some of the
To put it in perspective, Crescent, right now, I have two trucks that don't carry water. So the brush trucks have the same problem, your engines have the same problem, your ladder trucks carry water. So very few of our trucks don't have to carry water and don't have that same type of environmental concern that the water freezes up. And I'm already keeping, I shouldn't tell you this because your contract tells me I've got to keep everything inside, but one of those trucks, we are circulating around kind of outside already having to do what, just what you suggested.
Okay.
You know, Judge, maybe, maybe a little bit different approach here is to talk about everything in a, in a kind of a bigger, pulled-together package. And that's one of the things that I was, one of the things that, that I think we need to look into, the buying power, what the, what the fire departments can get for the money, building-wise, is phenomenal. And I think that that is a great avenue to have the fire departments, EMS, build these buildings. What I, you know, one of the things that, that I wanted to do, the reason I put this on, is I'd like to be able to say, hey, with the three fire stations that we've talked about, that's a go. Let's make that happen. Let's earmark some funding for it, say, you know, that's, that's three point five million. Let's start working on acquiring the, the property that we need to. There's still a lot of hoops that we're going to have to jump through, but do we approve of that project? As Commissioner's Court, do we say yes on that one and give it the green light? And then, you know, kind of bundle everything together. I think that
Well, the sheriff's department can't be bundled together with the
Well, no, no, I mean
That's why I'm talking to him.
Right, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying as, at this point, are we ready to commit to some of these projects and say, yeah, let's, let's give that one a green light and start moving on it?
Well, I guess that's what we're going to have to vote on here today. That's, I was thinking, and I like that concept about the volunteer fire departments. I'll just tell you this, from looking at the volunteer fire departments, you can't fight fire without water. And I've talked about this with Jeff Young. And everybody seemed to say at the last Commissioner's Court, the last workshop that we had on this deal, is that if we could buy four pumper tanker trucks and put them at various strategic places here, Crescent's already got one, that'd be five pumper tanker trucks. They're about a half a million dollars apiece. That's two hundred million, that's two million dollars right off the top, which I think, and I, what I got from talking to all the different volunteer fire department chiefs the last time up here, is that none of them disagreed with the fact that we need the pumper tankers. All of them respond, if it's a big fire, all the nine fire departments are going to be there. And they're all going, we want to share the water. And we're going to all have to have the pumper tankers. That would, with yours, and if the county bought four more, we would have five three-thousand gallon tankers. That would really be enough to send tanker trucks to get back. That's almost a necessity for the
Granberry bought one, you know, back in May.
Yeah.
We're really talking six additional here.
That'd be six. That should be enough for, for a big fire. So if you talk about the big concept, I agree with that. I'd like to say that. I'd like to say, I'd like to vote on that and say, hey, I don't think there's a farm in here, and we'll, I see a bunch of them out here, that would disagree with the fact that the pumper tankers have got to be the main piece of equipment that we all need that everybody would share. That would benefit every single citizen, every single volunteer fire department in the whole county. That, is that what you're talking about? I agree with that.
Well, here's, let me, let me throw this on the table. Here's where I was, here's where I was going with this whole project. We've talked about the debt service rate and how we've got a debt service rate that we don't have any debt obligation for. I say, let's take, and here's my proposal, we can take this piece at a time, whittle it down however we need to do it. Let's take three and a half million to build the fire EMS stations that we talked about, with Texas EMS, at Bacchus, Decordova, and Indian Harbor. Build those three stations, help get some of that volume, call volume, off of the, our first responders out there with the medical situations. And then each, the sheriff's office, take the sheriff's office, Crescent's building, the two point one million in tankers, the building in Pecan, Tuller's engine, Indian Harbor, Granberry's request to pay their tanker, and then the constable's request, and we come up at nine point six million. So that's the five point six ARPA money, and then go out for the, the tax bond, well, not bond.
Debt.
It's a tax debt.
Take the debt.
Tax debt.
Of four million dollars and complete all these projects and move us forward with the emergency services for the county.
I think that's a, that's almost, pretty much what I had written down, not those exact numbers, but we may not even have to use the debt because we have excess fund balance, which is why I wanted to have that conversation before this conversation. So we have options to be able to do what you said.
Yeah, but we do have a debt service
Yes.
rate that we, we have to borrow some money. We have to acquire some debt.
Three million, but we have to repay three million by September thirtieth of next year.
Yes, but we also have road construction that needs to happen on Old Granberry Road, so
Yeah, I got that down on that.
I don't think we'll have any issues, but I do agree that we need to focus this money on emergency services. And that, that's the best thing to, for all the citizens in Hood County. I think that fire EMS and ensuring that we have the building expanded in both Crescent and Pecan, because those communities are growing so fast and they, they're, they've more than outgrown their buildings. They're not going to be able to serve the people in Pecan and all the growth that's happening in Crescent without the expansion of those buildings. So I want, you had that in your proposal, correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, we need to add too, that the sheriff, the sheriff's department's going to have an opportunity in January to apply for a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And I would say that if that, if that, and I'm acknowledging there's an if there, but if it's, if he's able to obtain, the sheriff's department's able to obtain that grant, then that takes away some of the burden off of what we're doing right now. And then we've got the next budget cycle to take care of some of those other needs. So I'm kind of
For capital.
I'm kind of leaning, I mean, I like Commissioner Andrews, I think we need the facilities, because when they start working on the road, and, you know, obviously, my idea about Old Granberry Road is, has, that ship sailed. But, you know, we're going to need a way around there some way, and we're going to have to look at something down the road, excuse the pun, real soon. But in the meantime, we do have to do something about these ARPA funds, and obviously, Dave Eagle's project in precinct four, to do something with Old Granberry Road's not the, not on the priority list here, so I, that's fine. But the, the three and a half million on the three facilities, the tankers, contingency for the sheriff, and I like Kevin's idea, you know, I think we need to explore it from that perspective and just get it done.
Well, let me throw something out. About that, that ARPA, the grant for five hundred thousand dollars, that's an if and when. What are we going to be doing right now between the rest of November, December, January, and February, the four months, about the stuff with the sheriff's department? The pistols, the Spicato pistols, and the Skiberts, our holsters, and the Bearcat automobile, that's, that's all for me. That, that can wait. But the ballistic proof helmets and vests that they need, they need that stuff today. They don't need that four months from now or five months from now if we do get it. You got to have, to have a county, you've got to have protection for our first responders. That's number one. So I'm forgetting the ARPA funds to protect our community. That's, that's where it comes basic. Let's get that done. So I disagree with Commissioner Eagle about that. That five hundred thousand dollars, if and when it does come, I think the sheriff gave us what he says he can use that money for, and that's like the jail deputies, et cetera. But right now, what are we going to do with November, December, January, February? We're not going to get any money before that. So that's four months without our deputy sheriffs having the money. And that includes, I know, well, that's what I'm saying about that. I've talked to Ricky and the sheriff about, Jeff, about the three new EMS stations. I'd like to have four, but we could get by with two if we had one, what did you say, at Indian Harbor and at, what were the, what were the two we were talking about you really desperately have to have, Ricky?
Indian Harbor and Bacchus.
Indian Harbor and Bacchus. That's because of the construction that's going to come. You desperately have to have those two. If you had those two, you could probably get by with it. Am I, you know, you see what I'm saying on the deal? You could probably get by with just two rather than three, because we're calling Riley right at one point one million for each building. Am I right?
Yes.
So we, if we could do two, that'd be two point two million for two new buildings, make the money available to him so he doesn't have to go through all the rigmarole's that the county has to go through. Ricky's EMS is a Ricky's EMS is a 501(c)(3). Let him get started on that. That's again, to the benefit of every single citizen in Hood County to have the EMS going on there. That's two things that we really need. And then, like I said, the four tankers, we have to do that. And I don't, I don't know, Chief, you, you tell me, if we get $500,000 apiece, could everybody work together and kind of see about, I know, it ranged from pumper tankers from same 3,000 gallons, all over the place. Could you seem to, all of y'all work together and try to get the same
Sure.
pumper tanker for half a million dollars?
I don't think anybody, like we said in the workshop, nobody's opposed to standardizing these things. Like I told you, the truck that Crescent's going to get is almost a carbon copy of what Granberry already got for that reason. And when Jeff stood up here and told you he had some preliminary quotes, it fit right together
500.
with that. That's a benefit, not only from a purchasing standpoint, but operationally, because the firemen from Granberry can jump over here and run the Crescent truck when he has to, and, you know, they're all similar, the old Southwest, why Southwest flies the same type of airplanes. So I think, I think speaking for all of the fire departments, we, we saw that, the power of that with the pumper tankers from 2000, and I think everyone would be fine with something like that.
Yeah.
Ours is just a little different because our ship already sold, sailed, but we're plugged in with that same concept, at least following the Granberry precedent.
Yeah, so for the sheriff, the main things that were the highest priority in the Sheriff's Department, the 36 Shaw Concept arc carriers and plates, the 36 ballistic helmets, 72 shot stop ballistic rifle plates, those were definitely in my priorities. Those three items added together are about 120,000. So we definitely need to make sure that that 120,000 is in there. We've also got other sources, capital and fund balance, if we need to fund some other things for the Sheriff's Department. I think that, you know, I, I had the same conversation with Ricky a couple weeks ago about, if you could only do two, which ones would you do? So if we allocated 2.2 million to the Sheriff's Department, 2 million for the four pumper tankers, and then it's about a little over a million for the Pecan, Crescent, and Lipan. Didn't Lipan have a construction? A small amount for construction. So a little, little over a million for that, and then 25,000 for the same ballistic protection for the constables. That's how I came to my number, which was right at 5 point, a little over 5.6 million. So I didn't throw in the, the third, the third EMS building.
Well, I think, you said $2 million for the pumper, you said sheriff, that you meant the...
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, for the fire departments.
For the fire departments, $2 million off, right off the top for the four tankers, $500,000 apiece.
It's 2.1.
Okay? And then 2.2 million for two buildings. That would be a tremendous, that would get us by right now, but that's
EMS.
that's almost what has to happen. That's already 4.2 million dollars. And with the sheriff, the 527 sheriff, is that without the Staccato pistols?
Yes.
And without the, the Bearcat armor truck and the holsters, right? That's for all those stuff, that's for the night vision and all the other stuff?
Mm-hmm. 100, that includes 140,000 for the night vision, and the 82,000 for the 36 custom rifles with sight and sling. I didn't, I, in the most priority was the protection of the officers with the Shaw Concept, the things that I listed earlier. And if there's a, you know, we have other, we have capital and other sources to get the protection that the Sheriff's Department needs.
It's like I said, I think the sheriff, the night vision equipment, we got people coming up here, most, most people, I bet you half the hunters in here have sophisticated night vision, and the Sheriff's Department does not have night vision. That just puts them at a tremendous disadvantage right away if we got up here. And the rifles that we have, I think that the Sheriff's Department needs a half million dollars right now that we could have. So if you use the 2 million for the tanker pumper trucks, the 2.2 million for EMS for the buildings, and $500,000 for the Sheriff's Office, then that gives you 4,700,000 dollars right then. And one thing that we haven't talked about is anything for the 501(c)(3)'s down here that we really do need something. For example here, Rancho Brazos is the only one that's a qualified soup kitchen in the whole county. And it's a safety place for kids in event of a big disaster where they can go up there. We've got to do, and the third thing that's important for Rancho Brazos, is that they were being supported by the Methodist Church, and they do not have that anymore. We've got to do something. That is a tremendous deal to the entire community to have that facility up here to, where it can take in those kids. I just think that that is just something we just really have to have, in my opinion. And, you know, to give them $500,000 to provide a safe place for kids in the event of a disaster, and to continue the good work that they have, because we've got the land up there. So, again, the 2 million, the 2.2 million, and I say the 500,000 for the sheriff, and the $500,000 for Rancho Brazos, that's, that still gives us 5.2 million, which would still leave $400,000 for other things. That's...
You haven't addressed the buildings at Pecan and Crescent. Those are high priorities.
I think we should have some fundraisers for that, or go into the debt to do that. You know, in the hierarchy of things, that's, that's what I'm saying. Well, with the $400,000, what would it cost to do your, your building?
Our estimate was, I believe, 538.
And Pecan's was 6, 600.
And, and we're working on the fundraisers. Obviously, we did it, we, we come up with a truck that didn't have to dip into this to free it up for others. The other thing we've got going is, working with Ricky, we're trying to get us a, a landing site for helicopters up there. We use the racetrack when the, and, and the racetrack sometimes is occupied, so we, we're working on a big fundraiser project that's over $100,000 for that sort of thing. Already got some of the groundwork laid with that with some of the local businesses. So don't think we're not out here trying to get this stuff from anywhere we need to, and, and we've got the site. The city, city hall's going to let us put it next to there, and Air Vax approved it, so.
The building that used to be the barbecue place and the safety place, I know it was yesterday when I went through, you know, is up for sale. I'm just wondering if that, because that parking lot's big enough, you could, you know, have a chopper drop there, possibly.
Yeah, it has, we, we, we've looked at using it, it has some light posts in it. We've landed helicopters on parking lot there and another one in between the light posts, but that's okay, kind of in the daytime. Nighttime's a little scarier to
Right.
put a helicopter in between those.
Either that, or the property in front of the old school, but it's not lit well.
We've landed helicopter there at the old school, too. It's, it's just a little tight. I mean, heaven forbid we crash one of those things.
Let me ask the Commissioners here. It looks to me like that we're in agreement, at least, with two things, about the pumper tankers for the volunteer fire departments, and about the two EMS buildings, at least the two, two of the EMS buildings, right now.
Well, and I would, I would make the argument that, that, you know, that that third one is, it may not be as high a priority as the other two, but I would still argue that that is a significant priority for this county. I know that that, looking at a heat map of where the calls come in, that area down there, De Cordova has a lot of, that fire department runs a lot of calls, and Crescent's southern end over there, too. There are a lot of calls in that area, and that, I think that that is a critical piece of this puzzle, to put that third station over there. We've sat and looked at numbers and beat this thing to death over the last, how long we been working on this, Ricky? Three, four years, something like that? And, and that, and it, and it's expandable there, you know, go toward Toller, go toward the, kind of the northeast side of Granberry over there, you know, Temple Hall Highway area. This is, this is where the growth is coming, and I think that, you know, to put us in a good position right now, I mean, this, this deals with right now, not only the future. And I think that, I think that it's pretty critical to go with all three of these stations. That's, that's my personal opinion.
So you also...
Even Ricky would say this, and Jeff Young would say this, because I've had private conversations with two of them, two of them definitely got to have, got to have. Can't even talk about that. The other one, sure, it'd be nice to have, be nice to have it, but you got to have the two.
Well...
Let's start off with the two right away. It's going to take a while to build them anyway. I mean, let's start off with those two right away. We got the, the money right there with the ARPA funds, that's 2.2 million dollars right, right away. And get those tanker, those pumper tankers ordered. That's, that's already then 4.2 million dollars. We can agree on that, can't we? I bet, I think that everybody here in the room could agree that you got to have those two. Yes, Jeff Young?
Judge, Commissioners, I think everybody knows the old cliche about opinions. I'm going to smell mine out right now. I was going to ask to defer my comments to the end, but I kind of feel like maybe I should come up and say something now. The three stations, you'd mentioned something about getting by. When we first came and started talking to y'all about the expansions and the stations and the equipment and the vehicles that we needed, it was kind of in a five-year plan. Well, we're, we're two years into that since we've come and spoke to y'all since then. I don't know if we want a plan to just get by when we can prepare ourselves and get better suited to, to serve the citizens of the county with the, the assets and stuff that we're asking for now. I, I kind of think, in my opinion, that our top priority would be the three stations and the four tankers. I think the building projects that the fire departments have to house that equipment and to keep it protected and out of the elements, you know, I'm not sure which two vehicles Mr. Becker was talking about that don't have water, but even our EMS vehicles have to be climate controlled, because there are medications and stuff in those vehicles that, that cannot be exposed to the elements. They can't be super hot, they can't be super cold. So those, the EMS vehicles, even though they don't cover or carry a lot of water, they still have to be protected as well. So unless it's a squad that's designed to move people that has no equipment in it, I can't think of any other vehicle that could safely, efficiently be stored outside.
That's why, that's why I'm, I'm not backing off the Pecan and the Crescent
Yes.
expansion, because we, that's definitely needed for the things that you just mentioned. So that's a million between the two.
So I, I very much concur with, with Commissioner Andrews' assessment.
Well, I do too, but the $2 million for the tankers, and then 3.3 million for the three buildings, you are at 5.3 million. You only have 5.6.
So here, here's where my opinion part comes into that. I would say, take the building projects and consider those with your ARPA funds. Take the line of credit or the, the fund balance, or whatever it else is
Capital.
we have, that is an option that we discussed in, in six and seven, or seven and eight, whatever it was, and use those funds to consider purchasing the tankers.
I think that's a really good idea.
Because the tank, the tankers, if I called the guys today and ordered, they're six months to a year out anyway. I don't know what the, the funding requirement is when you call and order four tanker trucks at 2.1 million dollars, but I'm sure we're not going to, I wouldn't have to write them a check today to get those trucks in production.
You'll have to be in a year with that.
So, I, I mean, the, the trucks are going to take some time. The buildings, I think, are also going to take some time. But in speaking to the local builder that Mr. Reeves has been speaking to, I know when I was talking about building a storage facility, he told me he'd have it done in a month. I don't know that we're going to have three EMS fire stations built in a month and ready to go, because there's still interior and stuff that's got to be done to get those buildings functional. But, I, I mean, it's going to be a little bit of time to build those, those buildings and get those projects done.
Well, and they're...
So that was just my suggestion, is consider the, the other lines of funding available for the things like trucks and, and those kind of things, and let's get the building projects underway.
Yeah, my, with the ARPA funds, I think that we lean hard on the buying power of, of the fire departments and the EMS.
Absolutely.
With the, with the building projects, so...
So you're saying, so 3.3 for the EMS fire locations for all three, and then the buildings between Lipan, Crescent, and Pecan, it's 1.1 million?
Well, and I was, I was going to pull the Lipan building project off.
Okay.
And, because Lipan's a recipient of one of those tankers. So, you know, I came down to what's the priority? I'd rather have the tanker, we can, we'll, we'll do the building.
Well, and your, your building is a renovation project, if I
Yes.
In the scheme of insulation.
Right.
It was only, only 51,000
Right.
in the scheme of things. So, okay, so let's just say a million. So that's 4.3 million between the, all construction, construction of three EMS fire and renovations to Crescent and Pecan is...
And, and, you know, talking, talking a little further, we may need to earmark a little bit more for the EMS buildings, I know with the, one there at Indian Harbor. I was talking to Ricky about 3.5. Is that for the three buildings, about where we would need to be to make sure that we're getting all the site, site work done and utilities connected and everything?
This is, this is three to draw to, isn't it? Chief Becker, Ricky Reeves, and Jeff Young.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So, in talking with Indian Harbor and the circumstances they have to deal with, with the old station, we're going to need to make that station a little bit bigger to accommodate their equipment. And so we were looking at a couple hundred thousand more for that. And this come up in discussions yesterday with what circumstances they have with, with Indian Harbor HOA and the building they currently are in. If we start a building project for them on the front, front gate, they've got to have one to be able to accommodate all their equipment. So we were looking at another couple hundred thousand to be able to expand that to six or seven bays to be able to do that. These stations are EMS, fire combination stations. It's sleeping quarters, it's a full thing for the future. I'm accommodating one bay only, the rest of them are all fire departments. So these are strategically put in location, like the judge said, based on our current run volume. Our current, current run volume is saying that Indian Harbor, De Cordova, and then out back is to get to Lipan quicker, and Oak Crowe Shores, and North Hood County is where we need to locate those, based on our call volume or heat mounts. We also are looking at the construction coming in the next 10 to 12 years, that's going to impede our ability to get from where we are currently to any of those locations. So getting ahead of the curve and getting there now will save us in the future when they start the 144, 377 construction, then future 377. Judge, to your, your questions, I'm not going to say no to a gift horse for anything, but I think if you were really to ask my opinion, I do think under the ARPA funds, building the three EMS buildings, and the way that we can build them with the ARPA funds, is going to save the county money in the future versus doing it later at the cost that will be to the county to do that, because of all the processes the county has to go through. So, and if you have the ability to finance something like the rolling stock, then, and you have that funding, I would look at that direction as well. And that takes care of your building projects and gives you some money left over, maybe for the 51(c)(3)'s as well. And then you're, you're purchasing or financing the rolling stock, just like I financed my rolling stock, so...
So I have a proposal. So 3.5 EMS fire, 1.1 Pecan/Crescent, that's 4.6, 500,000 for sheriff, 24... for sheriff, 25,000 for constables is right around 5.1.
What about the tankers?
There, we have capital or fund balance or, or what? Or debt? Yes.
Well, and, and I'll second that. For that, for that portion, I'll second this, and we can talk about, you know, we may have to do this in pieces. So, yeah, I'll second that motion.
Wait a minute, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
The motion is 3.5 earmarked for EMS fire, 1.1 for the construction at Pecan and Crescent. Four point, that's 4.6. And the sheriff's department is the 500,000, and then 25,000 for the constables for the same safety equipment and the equipment that they need is 5.1. It's not exact, but it's right around. Becky might be adding it up for me. That's the motion.
I second it.
I got, we have some people that wanted to talk.
Oh, you want to talk? Okay.
Uh, who? I got a bunch of people wanting to talk. Yeah.
I got an addendum to that, too.
Well, we're ahead Becker and Young speak. Let me see here. Matt Hohon. And then Scott Christie. You going to pass? You're going to have, okay. And then Tina Brown. So.
Judge, Commissioners, I appreciate your time. I don't need the position you're in. The one thing. There we go. The one thing that I would ask you to consider is at the last workshop, I mentioned leadership and a 36,000-foot view. 20-plus years ago, the Commissioners were poised in the same position and having to make a decision that would impact the community. That was the right decision, and that impact carried them for 20-plus years. The decision that you're about to make has the same impact. Look forward. I, I emphasize, don't worry about tomorrow. Look at where we're at in 10 or 15 years, because this decision has that impact. Look that far out. It's critical. Any questions?
Do you feel like we're not doing that?
No, I think you are.
Okay.
I think you are. If anything, I would advocate for the four EMS stations and every single fire truck that everyone's requested. The departments know what they need. You got to remember that that's why they're chiefs and that's why they're there. They're telling you what they need, and it's not for tomorrow. It's for 10 years out. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, Tina Brown.
I'm completely saddened by this court. I know, I know fire safety is important. That is why I came here in the beginning. I know law enforcement is important. I mean, that's, they keep us safe. But these nonprofits are hurting, and you don't care. This is very sad. All, the, the law enforcement, the fire department can all be funded by you. It can be funded by you. This money, the ARPA money, was made, it was given to us to help. I know, I know it can be used for many things, but it was given to help the underprivileged, the people who were hurting from COVID. So y'all, I mean, I hear, I heard the judge, I only heard the judge talk about nonprofits, about the people that are still hurting from COVID. I didn't hear any of you speak up. This is sad. Was that motion, I didn't even hear that motion because, because I, I was afraid I wasn't going to get to talk, so I wasn't paying that much attention to the motion. I'm sorry about that. But was $500,000 in there for Rancho Brazos?
No.
No? We're not going to fund Rancho Brazos? We're not talking about, so, any of the nonprofits? I, I am ashamed of this court. I really am. I mean, these, these kids need help. I know Commissioner Wilson was at the gala that I went to. The person who spoke is here today, and they, that, and I wish she was speaking on this. I wish she had signed up, because I wish you could hear her story about what they are doing there. We need, we need Rancho Brazos in multiple places around this county. We need to support them. We need to support United Way. Did you hear what United Way, their numbers are down to 25,000 this year?
Rancho Brazos?
It was 325,000 three years ago. You're not going to give anything to them? I know we gave computers to.
Forward training.
For training, but they also need help in programming and, and stuff like that. They, she was here last time.
They still need about 50,000.
Huh?
They need about 50,000.
So is that even being considered? This is the first time that this court has actually come forward and said what your priorities are. We have been to, we, we, we've danced around this all year, this, this whole calendar year. We finally got an application form done. We had a workshop. The, you know, these people have come, the applicants have come forward. This is the third time. No, the workshop was the one, first time. So this, this is the third time that we have danced around this, that, and I'm ashamed. And I will be loud about this. These people need our help.
I'd, I'd like to say this, because philosophically, and I've said this, I've, I've told, you know, this is an angsty position to be in, but philosophically, you've got a government that takes money. This money wasn't given to us. This was our money that was taken away from us forcibly by the government. Then they go and then their benevolence send it back down for, and put these labels on it and say, this will be used for this purpose or that. It, it's not easy to sit up here and say, it's not okay for the government to take from somebody so that I can give to a nonprofit to feel better about myself. A person has every right in the world to go support the nonprofit out of their own pocket of their choice.
Then why did you support Stanley House in the budget? You did support them. Are we not?
No.
Start the clock.
Are you talking?
The clock is running.
Do you mean the, the art group that came up that wanted?
No, 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 no. You, you, you budgeted money in the county budget for nonprofits, a few.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why do you get to pick and choose?
That's, but that's.
Because you're sitting there.
That's my point exactly. Why do I get to pick?
Then why didn't, why did you approve it?
That's.
Why didn't you take it away? Why didn't you say, no, let's just give them, let's just give them 10,000 this year instead of 75?
No, you have a very legitimate point.
I do.
And I sat and, and consternated that and, and discussed removing that from the budget. And we.
So we can, we can either help them now as children, or we can build more jails, more detention centers, and we can, we can, we can give them government subsidies and housing and electric and all of that. We can help them now or later. And I am ashamed if y'all don't do something.
There, there are a million good causes out there. There absolutely are. And to sit up here and confiscate somebody's money and then decide which good cause to go to, that's not okay. That's not the position, that's not the role of government.
What was this money for? Why didn't you send it back?
The, the money was your tax money.
Why didn't you send it back to them?
Government took it away from.
If you're not happy with it, why didn't you just send it back?
Okay.
I got something I'd like to throw in.
I'm next.
You're next. Okay. Commissioner Wilson's after me. When we first, when they first started talking about ARPA money, I didn't want it. Because of just what Commissioner Wilson, excuse me, Commissioner Andrews stated. ARPA money is money that was taken from us via federal income tax. The Biden administration came in and came up with this grandiose program under COVID to put money back into each community with numerous, numerous strings. I'm talking about thicker than the finance, Gatsby 54, of regulations and connections and rules and strings. And I knew that we had a Trojan horse coming in here with this money in many ways. But philosophically, I have to agree with Commissioner Andrews and disagree with the last speaker, and there's nothing wrong with that. We can disagree, and you can be ashamed. But the bottom line is this, it is not our job to redistribute money. The government's job is not to redistribute money. We have 33, we have 33, at least 33 501(c)(3)'s here. Which one do you give it to? They all have great causes, but it deprives the individual the chance to donate to those outfits and to the money, to the charity of their choice. We have an aged community. Our demographics in this community is a higher-aged community that needs EMS services, the entire community. When they start working on 377, we're going to need to be able to get on both sides of it expeditiously. And it's, we're not able to do that right now. So I think these three buildings are, are major deals. And the ARPA money does give us the authority to do this with infrastructure. That is our job. Infrastructure is our job. Roads and bridges, fire, sheriff, that is our job. As far as fire is concerned, I, I've done firework as an attorney, and I've seen what happened, the aftermath of a, of a fire where little children burned up in it. And it's not fun. And so we need to give these guys all the resources they need to protect us on the fires and on EMS. And I'm sorry that it has to be, that, that the indication was out there that these 501(c)(3)'s could line up, because they are all great causes. I am not decrying that. But I am saying that is not our job. As much as I don't like that, it's not our job. Our job is what we're talking about right now, in my opinion. So that's my opinion. And so, all yours, Commissioner.
You know, we, we hashed this thing and hashed this thing and hashed it to the point it's ridiculous. We're only talking for the 501(c)(3)'s that met the requirements for the forms that were put out, less than six point, less than 600,000, what was, you know, requested. Not taking anything away from the fire departments, EMS, or the sheriff's department, because I've been there. But, you know, to sit up here and, you know, focus on one thing, and it's quite obvious that the three other Commissioners on this court have had, you know, multiple sessions, talk sessions together, and I will accuse them of that now.
That is absolutely false.
Because it's quite obvious.
Hasn't happened, Jack.
Absolutely false.
Has not happened.
I don't appreciate that. It's absolutely false.
Okay. I'm not talking over you. You don't talk over me. The people of this community, yeah, we've got people that live in one and two million-dollar homes. We've got people who live in 20,000-dollar shacks. The benefit of these 501(c)(3)'s far outweigh the benefit of these people that are living in those high-end places for what they don't do for the county and the citizens thereof. Now, I will sit here and tell you, based on the motion that's on the table now, my vote is no. Not against the fire department, not against the sheriff's department, not against EMS, but because of the way it's structured. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Yes. That is absolutely false, and I don't appreciate that. So the motion is on the table. It's got a second. Yes, ma'am. 3.5 fire and EMS buildings, 1.1 Pecan Crescent buildings, 500,000 for the sheriff's department for the equipment that they need, and 25,000 for the constables for the equipment that they need. And then the pumper tankers, the 2.1 or 2.2 for the pumper tankers, we will work that through another source.
Other stuff to talk about there?
Yes. And?
Yeah, and I seconded that.
Okay. So you understand the motion? Okay, the motion is made by Commissioner Samuelson for the construction, 3.5 million dollars for the EMS stations, 1.1 million dollars for the construction of the buildings at Pecan Plantation and Crescent, 500,000 for the sheriff's department, 25,000 for the constables department. I think we should take the tankers into a separate motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So that's the motion, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So the ayes have it, three to two. Okay. I hear a motion regarding the tankers, pumper tankers.
Can we do that with the agenda the way it is?
I think the, I think we need to do that as a different agenda item, don't you?
It'll have to be on another agenda.
Yeah, we need to, we need to put that on the next court.
Fine. Okay, takes care of item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Office of Emergency Management to submit the application of funding, Senate Bill 22, Ms. Margaret Campbell.
Judge, Commissioners, man, I wish y'all had put me before item 10.
But this is, this is, all the rest of them are good things.
That is true. Okay, so item 11 is, I'm asking y'all to allow us permission to apply for Senate Bill 22, which is the law enforcement grant. Typically, we don't need Commissioners' Court approval before we apply for a grant. However, the opinion that came out of the comptroller's office specifically asks that we get Commissioners' Court approval before we turn in the application. So I know it's a little bit premature. It's only November, and the application doesn't open until January 1, but I wanted to go ahead and put it on the agenda today so that we can get approval. That way, when the time comes, we don't have to delay. We can go ahead and just submit as soon as the application opens.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we allow the Office of Emergency Management to submit the application of funding regarding SB 22 law enforcement grants.
Second.
Quick question, quick question. Is there a county match?
There is not on this. It's, this is the 500,000 for the sheriff's office we were talking about earlier.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Read the fine print.
Yes.
Yeah, I've, I've read it, too. There's no match.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion is made by Commissioner Eagle to allow the Office of Emergency Management to submit the application of funding regarding Senate.
All right, Tina's got, Tina wanted to talk. Sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm on. Let me go ahead. I'm going to still call for discussion before we vote. Okay. Regarding Senate Bill 22, seconded by, who seconded it? Commissioner Samuelson. Now, further discussion, Tina Brown.
Yeah, I'm going to pass. Just keeping you on your toes. She explained the.
Okay.
She could ask any bills?
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Okay, item number 12.
Second.
Discuss and take appropriate action regarding Hood County Commissioners' Court policies and procedures as related to policy for travel and reimbursement. Commissioner Eagle.
Okay, we have a travel reimbursement policy that dates back to September 22, 2015. I'm going to propose that we, I'm going to take this off the agenda with the caveat that we're going to work on this, updating this policy and procedure together with appropriate people to do that with. And we'll, I'll just pull this from the, we're, it's noon already, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll work out the written edits that we need to do to fix this policy. So, that's it. Pulled.
Okay. 12 is pulled. 13 is pulled. 12 is pulled, 13 is pulled, and 15 is posted. I lose one last item. Item number 14. Consider and take appropriate action to approve Hood County Substance Abuse Council's funding request of $20,000 from the opioid settlement fund. Commissioner Andrews.
Okay, yeah, the, the settlement against the opioid manufacturers, we've got some funding there that they released to each county, and that funding, this is, this fits exactly into the guidelines of what they're looking for. So, you know, everything, everything lined up really well with, with what that funding's for. The only question I had, and it's still, I guess, a little bit out there in limbo, is they had requested 4,000. They get an allotment of Narcan, and they had requested additional $4,000 to buy Narcan in the future. Texas EMS is kind of doing that. I didn't know if we needed to send them through Texas EMS to get the Narcan or just do a separate distribution to them, so.
I'm right here. Hi, so my name is Harley Walts. I'm the new executive director over at Hood County Substance Abuse Council. So right now, our Narcan actually gets paid for through our CARA grant and, but with the rise in times, and we don't know what can happen, so that's why that allotment is there, just in case that price does go up, because I am having to buy, purchase it through my CARA grant.
Okay, and yeah, and I don't in any way have any objection to spending money on the Narcan.
No, you're good.
It was just, do we go through Texas EMS as our central distribution or just bypass that?
Oh, no. That is totally a vessel that we can look into in the future, but for right now, that's just how we're doing it, and I just became into this position as of November 2nd, so we're still, thank you, so we're still trying to, still trying to adjust.
Okay, would you be okay with, with the 16,000 for the, the educational materials? And then to leave the other thing, yeah, just go to, go to Ricky and we can fund that through, through there. Are you okay with that?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, we had set aside, March or April?
Yeah.
I don't know, it was a while back, we had set aside a certain amount of money to be used for Narcan.
Mm-hmm.
Out of this opioid fund. So this is, this is one of the ways we're able to help the 501(c)(3)'s, so I'm really glad we have this opportunity to do this and match this request up with funding that was specifically for this, so thank you.
Of course, and then, of course, I'm available if y'all have any more questions pertaining to this, and then I just appreciate the thought that went into this, and of course, Margaret and Emily for allowing me to come and sit down and explain all this to me, so.
Well, no, thank, thank you for what you do.
Yes, thank you.
And just to kind of reiterate, this is not taxpayer money. This is a settlement through the opioid manufacturers, and the condition of that settlement was that they had to spend it on education to.
Right.
To stem opioid.
Thank you, Ken Paxton, for filing lawsuits.
All right, okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion.
He is a stand-up guy.
I'll make a motion to approve the 16,000 with the caveat that Narcan can be secured through Texas EMS from the opioid settlement fund to the Hood County Substance Abuse Council.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the Hood County Substance Abuse Council's funding request of $16,000 from the opioid settlement fund, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those.
Tina. Tina wanted to talk.
Yes.
I, I just wondered how much money is in this fund? And have we given any of it out? I mean, how much have we given away and how much is left?
I have to, it's 90,000.
Ninety-six, I think.
90,000 total?
Yeah, and we set aside some, like I said, last April or May for the Narcan, and then this is the first opportunity that we've had to.
And then 16,000 here. And is, is the reason that this fund doesn't require an application form is because it's not taxpayer dollars?
It's, it was, as part of the settlement, as part of the lawsuit that was settled on this deal, it said the opioid manufacturers will pay this money to be spent by the counties to stem the abuse of opioids. That's, that is the specific purpose of that money, to address the opioid.
I know, but nobody has to fill out an application form like they had to jump through all those hoops with ARPA money?
Nah.
No? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, brings us up to Ms. Kidd. You ready?
No.
Our treasurer.
Consent.
Consent. Consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson made a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we, no other items, next we have Mr. Clint Head with Development.
Afternoon, Judge. Afternoon, commissioners.
Okay.
Development accepted applications for the replats of Decordova Ranch Phase 2, Lot 6R, Block 8, and Precinct 3, and Comanche Co., Section C, Lot 12R, Block 1, and Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for these replats for the December 22, Commissioners' Court.
December?
22.
22. 2023. Are we having a Commissioners' Court hearing on the 22nd?
Friday.
It's on Friday, that's right. I knew we had done something about that, okay.
We'll be here all on Tuesday, we're all there.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion for this? All those in favor of setting the Decordova Ranch Phase 2 and the Comanche Co.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we set the public hearing for Decordova Ranch Phase 2, Lot 6R, Block 8, and Comanche Co., Section C, Lot 12R, Block 1, for December 22.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to set the hearings for both Decordova Ranch and Comanche Co. for December 22, 2023, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Second, public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of South Bend Edition Lots 9, 21R, and 22R. So at this time, at 12 minutes after 12, we're going to convene into a public hearing. Mr. Head.
This replat is being done to create a fence and wall maintenance easement, and is very restricted on the plat as such. This property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3, and is served by A mud water and onsite sewage facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat, all comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat of South Bend Edition Lots 1X, 21R, and 22R as presented.
Anybody wish to make any comment, questions, anything? If not, at 12:13, we're convening back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
It's a move that we approve the replat of South Bend Edition Lots 9, 21R, and 22R.
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of the South Bend Editions Lots 9, 21R, and 22R, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Item C, discuss and consider the final plat of Contra Creek Edition Lot 1, Block 1, Precinct 1.
This final plat is a subdividing of a 1.33 acres tract, part, creating a lot of 1.33 acres. It is part of the Thomas Price Survey Abstract Number 439. This property is located in the Rural District in Precinct 1, be served by Aqua Texas Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. There are no streets proposed with this plat application, no variances associated with this final plat. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Good. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Contra Creek Edition Lot 1, Block 1.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of Contra Creek Edition Lot 1, Block 1, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Next, discuss and consider the final plat of Acton Elementary Edition Lots 1 and 2.
This final plat is subdividing of a 12.002 acres tract that is part of the BBNC Railroad Company Survey, Abstract Number 75, in Hood County. Property is located in Road Corridor District in Precinct 3. These lots will be served by A mud water and sewer. There are no streets proposed with the plat application, and there are no variances associated with the final plat. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
It's a move that we approve the final plat of Acton Elementary Edition Lots 1 and 2, and Block 1.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the final plat of Acton Elementary Edition Lots 1 and 2, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Ms. Becky Kidd.
It's good to be last. Okay, for this court, your expenditures for old budget, $35,596.85. New budget, $2,397,428.73. We have reviewed all these invoices, and we do recommend payment.
Any questions? Comments? Disclosures? Audits? Do I hear a motion?
It's a move that we pay the invoices as stated, the old budget of $35,596.85, new budget of $2,397,428.73.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the budget of, old budget of $35,596.85, the new budget of $2,397,428.73, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't talk about the payments over 10,000. Payments over 10,000.
I don't have anything. Was that?
Yeah, the payments over 10,000, well.
Were there any payments over 10,000?
Yes.
That was so.
Yeah, so there's an item on there that's, the 1.5 million going to TCDRS to pay the outstanding liability. Our outstanding liability is just over a million, so Becky and I had the conversation yesterday of why are we paying 1.5 million when our outstanding liability is 1,022,052? I would recommend that we do a little bit more research on this before we do this. There possibly could be some impact to the budget.
No, ma'am, this has been budgeted. We've given this notification to TCDRS. We've already reduced our liability for the year. I would have to go in, restructure everything by the 15th, which I do not want to do. I'm strongly opposed to that, and then I will have to adjust every single retirement budget in the county. Either you pay it upfront or you pay it during the year.
We do pay it during the year with every paycheck that goes out, but we, with this payment, we will be overfunded.
We will not be overfunded. That's a misnomer.
Well.
We can agree to disagree.
We, we, our liability is $1 million, not 1.5.
Well, I'm the auditor for a little bit longer, and I've done a lot of research on this, and I want to take care of these people who work for the county. I want them to be able to draw this type of retirement for as long as they can, and I fought long and hard to get here at 2.5%.
Well, we discussed this, this has already been discussed.
Yes, sir, we, we approved this during budget time.
Well, we set aside what we thought would be the sales tax overage, but we don't know the final sales tax overage.
I do know the final sales tax overage.
Okay.
We budgeted 4.5. We received $7,144,311.
Okay, so.
After you pay TCDRS, you'll have $1,144,331, which you cannot pay on debt this year.
But we can in January.
No. You cannot. You have to use property tax to pay the debt. This is not property tax.
No, okay, so, okay, so the, the question that I had is why are we paying 1.5 when we owe only 1 million?
Because during the summer, that was the number that I discussed with TCDRS. That is what we've talked about. That's what we figured we would do. Don't know how much sales tax you're going to get in, but I had a pretty good idea of where we were. We talked about this in court, we talked about what you could do with the additional monies, and y'all approved this payment.
So there's, okay, so normally, I don't say normally, but in the times that I've watched this process happen, what you normally did was you would come to court and say, this is a sales tax overage. What do you all want to do?
Absolutely.
And that didn't happen.
But this year, I had a pretty good idea of where we're going to go, so I put it in the budget, so it could be a done deal, so I don't have to come back during the year and go, okay, I need to do a line item transfer and move money in here. It was, it was done. And I know you might think it's a placeholder, but if that's a placeholder, then the Crescent Bypass is a placeholder, all the monies that, that I pay, because it's budgeted and we owe it, then they're just placeholders. But they're not. This court agreed to pay that. We are not overfunded by any means.
Well, we are paying more than we owe, so I call that overfunded.
I disagree.
We will be paying every paycheck, so.
Which is my plan.
What, I didn't hear what?
The percentage will go down in what we have to pay.
Yes, next year. She's saying that the percent that comes, that's allocated per each person's paycheck will decrease because there'll be excess funds or additional funds in the TCDRS.
And that's budgeted, that's what I base that on.
Okay.